You're not going to talk?
Well, I'm going to come up. Is there an idea?
Okay. Where is Ms. Shinnay? Right. Okay. Okay, cool. Welcome to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April the 22nd. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Tissier are stuck in a traffic jam on Highway 280. So we will begin with roll call.
Is there Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Horsley?
Present.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We'll next go to public comment, and I would ask Martin Fox.
Vice President Groom, members of the board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum, Mr. Malby, and county council, thank you for your service to the county and pledging your allegiance to our republic which guarantees freedom of association for all. Even those persons living with serious mental illness were insight deficient and cannot advocate for the services that would restore their freedom to associate with their families. Laura's Law assisted outpatient treatment produces positive outcomes, and evidence of the positive outcomes was examined by the United States Department of Justice before it certified assisted outpatient treatment as an effective economical and humane way to promote recovery. That positive evidence shows implementing Laura's Law is a reasonable rational and economical way to produce positive outcomes for those living with mental illness that are insight deficient, including those who have served their country honorably. Laura's Law gives families like Errol Chang's, as well as our law enforcement officers, an evidence-based alternative to prevent confrontations involving untreated serious mental illness from taking place, even if the person living with mental illness is insight deficient. Family members of persons living with mental illness have the right to freely associate with their loved ones who are insight deficient without being required to expose them to the dangerous brutality of the streets that the health system's policies and procedures uses to modify their behavior, under the guise of the intellectually and morally bankrupt Lenterman-Petras Short Act and HIPAA. Persons living with mental illness who are insight deficient need an incentive like the one Laura's Law provides to help them truly recover because it provides access to treatment based on their need. The negative outcomes produced by the policies and procedures which limit treatment to those who volunteer are being demonstrated funeral by funeral. Give hope to family members of persons living with mental illness that are insight deficient, and vote to implement Laura's Law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next, Roger Medler.
Good morning. Anyway, I'm here for Mr. Beers sent me to Mr. Silberman, and I left him documents and tapes of more than enough information about an expanded business called Save You Tire and Brake with no certificate of occupancy so far presented to me, and they've been working on it for 29 years and six weeks, and now they're saying they need 29 years and seven weeks, and this is going on, probably going to go on until the day I die. And I mailed Mr. Silberman some of the information, and he sent me back. He wants to know about the zoning, the permits, and he wants to know whether, identify the code violations, and I was asked him, well, isn't he a lawyer? And he should ask, put in a request to the City of Pacifica for these questions, not me, but he did have him in the information I gave him. I don't know why he did that. So he said that it comes to all, after all this round and around stuff, it came to, he said, "It's not in his jurisdiction." He said, "I need to go to District Attorney." Well, the District Attorney's told me it's not in his jurisdiction. So I went to California Coastal Commission, "It's not in their jurisdiction." And I went to Kevin Mullins, he said it's not in his jurisdiction either. So I went to Jerry Hill and Chris Hunter, and they said a copy of the business permit was enough for them, and the case is closed and settled within the legal distance, the system, and that is not true at all. They should at least call me and ask me and discuss it. I can talk. And so it's, I don't know what jurisdiction means. It means that I can report a crime, but you can't. You can just walk by it and say, "Oh, it's not in my jurisdiction." I don't understand that at all. Maybe you can explain that to me someday. So I'm at, I seen pictures of a Chamber of Commerce where Bill Meyerhoff, who owns this business, is standing next to Don Horsley at Devil's Slide Park, and I guess I'll just have to keep coming back. So, thank you. How do you like me so far?
Thank you, Mr. Medler. Next, Teresa Dyer.
Good morning, county supervisors and staff. Teresa Dyer, 14 away, Crespey Drive. I'm here to try to get some justice from your department here, and I'm going to give you a document today that I found in the court files that was not addressed to me, but it was addressed to the judge that heard my case, and I'll briefly read it to you. The enclosed copy of letter from Lynn Allen White is self-explanatory. Attached is a copy of the minutes for that date. I hope you have kept your notes. Would you please sign the judgment if appropriate and return in the closed stamped self-addressed envelope. Very truly yours, Warren Slocum County Clerk Recorder Helen W. Powers. And there were some notes by Judge Veal and Judge Bible that there was no transcript. This is just one piece of evidence that I have in my fraud case that I'm going to give to the supervisors that are present today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Okay, I don't see anyone. So we will now go to the setting of the agenda. I have requests to remove 15, 16, 26, and 27.
Madam Vice Chair, also item 19, please.
19.
If we can move it to the regular agenda.
Okay. 15, 16, 19, 26, and 27.
We have approval of the consent agenda and all those items that have been removed, the consent agenda and the regular agenda as well.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, so we will now go to item number one, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating April 2014 as National Poetry Month. Supervisor Slocum.
Thank you. It's easier with three of us, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's much faster.
I kind of like it. You'll remember that it's been a year, or it was a year ago, that we designated April 2013 as National Poetry Month, and I'm here this morning to make a motion that we approve a proclamation designating April 2014 as National Poetry Month.
And I will second your motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. So you'll remember that Caroline Goodwin over here on our left is San Mateo County's first poet laureate, and she's been very busy in the last few months, and she's going to actually read one of her poems to us this morning, and after she reads, I'll present her with this proclamation. But I thought it appropriate Supervisor Horsley that she's actually written a poem, and I'm not sure I pronounced this right, but Rana Dre Tonyi. Is that close? Yeah. And basically, that's the California Red Legged Frog, which you'll know from your Sharp Park golfing days.
Yes.
And anyway, she's written that, this poem, and we'll read that in just a moment. But before she, before we call her up and she reads, let me just say that we've actually started a poet laureate blog, a website, which you're invited to visit. But I was poking around this morning and looked at the calendar of events that Caroline is involved with, and I just wanted to quickly go through a couple of these. April 20, April 22nd, she'll be obviously reading her poem here. April 25th, Poetry Slam Belmont Library. Monday, May 12th, Poetry Contest Awards Ceremony, Portola Valley Library. June 6th, Teen Poetry Contest Ceremony and Reception at the Half Moon Bay Library. And June 7th at the San Mateo County Fair, Running of the Poets. So I'm sure there are other things on her calendar, but she's obviously keeping busy. And I thought I'd read just a little bit from her blog this morning because I thought it was really beautifully done, and this is from a March 31st entry called Poetry Is. And I'm not going to read it all, just a little bit here, but she says, "What a beautiful place we live in. I've been reading and thinking about the county's diversity, history, and languages. I think we have one of the most amazing library systems in the world, and I've always been a fan of the library. As the information age continues to improve, the rate at which we can communicate, I believe that the library will become even more central to our lives, our needs for community, for talking with one another face to face, and for learning from one another. I don't think these human needs will ever fade. I also hope that we never lose our need to browse, to hold books in our hands, to carve out an afternoon just for wandering and reading. I myself have had many surprising discoveries in my own writing practice through my commitment to leisure time at the library." So thank you for your writing on that blog. I thought that was really well said, and I do think we have one of the best library systems in California, so thank you for pointing that out. And if you'll go to the podium, we'll welcome San Mateo County's first poet laureate, Carolyn Goodwin.
Good morning. Thank you all so much. Thanks for making space for poetry. I really, I'm so privileged and honored to be here and very grateful for everything that being poet laureate has brought so far, just meeting some amazing people and having a really good time. So the, my poem that I'll read this morning, Rana, I think it's Rana Dre Tonyi, was based on a poem that I love by an English poet called Christopher Smart. And it's interesting for me to think about the fact that he was writing in the mid 1700s when the missions were being founded here in California. He was a colorful character. I think this was probably an early form of a poetry slam, which were the paper wars in London, where many of the London's writers took each other down a peg by sort of slamming each other's work publicly. And he was just a beautiful poet. He has a long poem called Jubilat Agno, Rejoice in the Lamb, which contains a long sequence about his cat Jeffrey. There's the "let" section of his poem, and then there's the "for" section of his poem, and it's very long, and every line begins with either "let" or "for." So because I love that poem so much, I wrote my own "for," "for the red-legged frog," and frogs are so important to our environment, and they are all threatened all over the globe. So Rana Dre Tonyi begins with just a little excerpt from the Christopher Smart poem when he's writing about his cat. "For I will consider my cat Jeffrey, for he is the servant of the living God duly and daily serving him. For at the first glance of the glory of God in the East, he worships in his way. For this is done by reading his body seven times round with elegant quickness." And the Smart poem is long and goes on and talks about all these different things his cat does. It's really pretty cool. And here's my poem. "For my hands also held him, for he was dry and tiny at the edge of the pond where the mud shone. For the rain arrived with the tides, and it filled my dreams, and in my dreams we gazed into our own skulls. For the poem rose up the tree trunk. For paint held the dust motes and pigment, and the young man painted an owl on the bricks, and it was good. For there were the torn clouds and sea lavender, the purple stems. For behind the white lattice work the weeds glowed, and a light arrived from the coast, and the hissing was high in the cypress. For he also held me in his hands. For the end of life is nothing. For a fragrant sage blew in from the desert, and the hummingbird and the woodpecker made their sounds in the lane. For the man on the corner in the twilight. For the bluish smoke. For he called to my beloved on the other side, and I nearly sensed her. For the turtle in the ocean filled with eggs. For the burrs and the weeds. For the shape of feathers and the ways in which they feel against the skin. For their fine hooks and barbs. For he dies every day of starvation, and of thirst, and of abandonment. For the ways in which we take our leave are manifold and growing. For the sound of his voice was like nothing, and was like everything. For the soil held it all rotting. For the flame and the bowl of fresh water. For the music of the pearly throat and the pond that finally called us all by name." Thank you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you. That was, thank you. Carolyn, that was the perfect poem for Earth Day. Thank you for reading that for us. Let me present you with this proclamation, if I could. And maybe we should stand over by the poet laureate.
Smiles, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. First, my apologies for my late arrival to my colleagues and to the audience. It was a parking lot situation with a overturn on 280, but nonetheless, my colleague Supervisor Tissier managed to navigate that more skillfully than I. So we will move on to a proclamation for Star Vista's Starting Line Breakfast, Supervisor Groom and Supervisor Horsley.
Well, let me talk a little bit about the history of the awardees and the project. Actually, what they, the awardee is a sergeant from San Mateo Police Department, and he did a remarkable thing with a project, a program called First Chance. And just to tell you a little bit of how First Chance started, what it really is is a facility for people who are arrested for DUI. It's an alternative to jail. How this originally started was, well, actually, it was, it started because the state of California, and of course, the California had this great idea about charging booking fees for police departments. And I was the sheriff at the time, and we certainly, we charged a booking fee that was pretty substantial. And the police departments and all the police chiefs got together, they, they thought they can come up with a better alternative that was about the same cost, and one of the things that they were concerned about was actually the speed of getting their officers back on the street. And so actually, the Star Vista really started the project, and they developed two different programs for people who were both DUIs as well as even 11-550s. And for those of you who don't know, 11-550 is people under the influence of drugs. And, you know, I have to say, when I was the sheriff, I wasn't, because I was losing revenue, I wasn't entirely enamored with it, and I thought, well, this, you know, will this, will this last or will it not? But what I discovered fairly early on is it took out of our system about 3,000 to 4,000 bookings a year. Now, for the uninitiated, you know, 3,000 to 4,000, those people, for the most part, tend to be middle-class, middle-aged, they're your average citizen, they're your next-door neighbor, they're your uncle, they're your father, they're your son, they're your daughter. And we discovered that all of a sudden, with having all those bookings out of the system, it really speeded up our whole booking process. And instead of officers having to wait, you know, hours to get their prisoner process, because our process is very detailed, you have to do mental health and health screening as well as security to find out, you know, make sure you know who's coming into our jail. And by taking all those prisoners out, all those people out, we've discovered that our system worked better, that we had fewer complaints, that, and also that, you know, the number of people, of repeat offenders from, who went to First Chance actually declined. So I became its biggest supporter. And any case, this particular story, and I'm going to let my colleague Carol Groom talk about the Sergeant Matthew Lethen, Lethen, I probably butcher your name, and he did some remarkable, and I guess it's Jimmy Sosa's also is going to speak as well, is here to be honored as well. What we also discovered is that there were some remarkable interventions between law enforcement officers and people that they run into on a regular basis, and, and the sergeant was honored at the Starting Line Breakfast for what he had done. And this was, this is in fact, a remarkable program, deserves our support, and I've, you know, one thing you can say about me is I do learn. You know, when I was, as the sheriff, I became his biggest supporter because it was such a remarkable program. Supervisor Groom?
Well, thank you, Don.
I love to tell these little stories.
So we're here today to honor Sergeant Matthew Lethen from the San Mateo Police Department. He's been a San Mateo Police Officer for the last eight years. And Jimmy Sosa, who was a residential counselor at Your House South and Daybreak during his time with Star Vista, and he now works for San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. And they did receive commendations at the annual Star Vista Breakfast, but we wanted to bring this to, to all of you today so everybody in the county could, could acknowledge their wonderful work. So next, I would like to invite the Star Vista CEO, Dr. Sarah Larios Mitchell, and she's going to, she's going to tell us more about all of this.
Thank you so much for that intro. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malby and Mr. Nevilleen. My name is Sarah Mitchell. I am the Star Vista CEO, and I'm absolutely delighted to be here in order to recognize two remarkable individuals. Sergeant Matt Lethen from the San Mateo Police Department, who's sitting in the back with his wonderful wife, and Mr. Jimmy Sosa from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. These two gentlemen played a critical role in the lives of our clients in our First Chance and Daybreak programs, and I'm absolutely thrilled to honor them. The staff shared with me how these two individuals went above and beyond, not sure if that's the mic or not, but they really went above and beyond in playing a critical role in the lives of our clients. And when I found out the extent of what they did, I was determined to track them down and find them so that I could say thank you to them. They are just incredible people. And so my staff and I thought, what's the best way to honor them? And we thought, you know, at our annual Starting Line Breakfast, that would be a really significant way to say thank you and to honor them. And I'm just delighted that we have the chance to recognize them here in front of this board. At our event, we showed a video of the clients whose lives were positively impacted by both First Chance and Daybreak. Sergeant Lethen played a critical role in the life of our client who went through First Chance. And Mr. Sosa played a very important role of our Daybreak client over 20 years ago. So I actually found Mr. Sosa 20 years later, and I was so excited when I finally met him. To give you some additional background, Supervisor Horsley did a great job in describing First Chance and giving the behind-the-scenes perspective, but First Chance is truly a compassionate sobering station. We've been operating this for over 20 years here in this county, and it was truly the vision of very progressive police chiefs and the sheriff in trying to create a safe alternative to the county jail for individuals who've been picked up for a DUI. We worked with them in developing this program that literally saves the lives of many. We have served thousands of individuals, and to give you a sense of the number now, it's about 2,000 folks who come through our First Chance program. We continue to partner with the police and also Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. But First Chance is really much more than just a sobering station. We provide case management services to clients who need linkages to referrals and resources in the community such as shelters, food, sober living environments, domestic violence programs, and shelter, physical and mental health services. First Chance staff also follows up and stays in touch with our clients for up to a year. So they call them, see if, how they're doing, make sure that they're engaged in treatment, and see if they need additional referrals or resources, and it also helps us in tracking our outcomes and staying in touch with these individuals. We also have a Spanish-speaking counselor who can stay in touch with our Spanish-speaking clients, and we do get a high number of these sorts of individuals. And more importantly, we are able to get the police back on the street really quickly. So our goal is 20 minutes from the time that the police come in to get them out the door, to go back and keep their community safe. So that is the goal that the staff really strives to meet. The First Chance staff also has training and experience in serving traumatized individuals. We are a trauma-informed center. They have extensive training in working with individuals with co-occurring disorders and individuals with physical disabilities. While we work with clients in a compassionate way, we also encourage them to practice accountability. Accountability is a core Star Vista value, and we support them in practicing this. So DUIs are obviously a very serious matter. We work with them in addressing the underlying issues and explore with our clients what got them into that situation in the first place. Because we use a strength-based positive approach, our clients tend to be, and we've heard they are much more positive and receptive when they go to court, and we've heard that repeatedly also. And finally, we treat all of our clients with a tremendous amount of respect, whether they're homeless or multimillionaires, and we actually get this broad range and everyone in between. Daybreak, which is the other program that's featured in the video and that you'll see in just a moment, is the only intensive residential service in San Mateo County specifically designed to meet the needs of homeless, runaway, and former foster youth ages 16 to 21 for up to 18 months here in this county. On any given night, just to give you a sense of the numbers, there are anywhere from 600 to 800 homeless youth between San Mateo and Santa Clara County. And with our growing housing crisis that we're facing here, we're actually anticipating that number unfortunately to rise. At Daybreak, these young people are provided with safe and stable housing, food, shelter, but also we give them comprehensive services, so they receive mental health services, counseling, emergency treatment, and independent living skills. We teach them how to shop, cook, manage their finances, and build healthy life skills. If they're in high school, being in high school and graduating from high school is a priority, and we do everything to support them in achieving that goal. So before we show that video again, I would like to thank Sergeant Lethen and Mr. Jimmy Sosa for their remarkable partnership. They absolutely deserve to be recognized today, and I would like to thank this board as well, as well as our county manager and our deputy county manager, Mike Callagie, for your support. There's absolutely no way that Star Vista could do what we do without your faith and confidence in what we do, and so I thank you, and I hope you enjoy the video.
Why don't we move on, and if you can pull it up, we'll see what happens. Sergeant Matthew Lethen and Mr. Sosa, are they joining us here at the restroom? Okay, maybe they could come up now, that'd be great.
All right, well, while we wait for...
Why don't you go ahead and make any remarks you might have? This may or may not work, so.
Okay, okay, I'll keep my fingers crossed. Members of the board, thank you very much for having me here today. It's an honor to be recognized. It's very flattering. Hopefully, we get a chance to see the video, the story of the individual I worked. I, to me, it's very touching, it's very rewarding. I, to me, it's very touching, it's very rewarding, and I would really, uh, like the opportunity for you to see it so you can appreciate, uh, that individual and really put the, the highlight and the focus on him, um, the great work he was able to do in his recovery with first chance, um, and move past his substance abuse issues. First chance, Star Vista, it's a great, uh, great resource. Supervisor Horstley, everything you said is true about, uh, everything that they provide. So, uh, the commitment that the county has to it, um, my department, um, under the administration of Chief Manheimer, um, that deserves to be recognized and encouraged as well. It's special. What we have here in this county is special. I've worked in other, in another county, and we didn't have that, so, um, it's, uh, it's a great resource, um, and, uh, I would just hopefully, uh, get to see it grow and, uh, and kind of flourish. So, thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to, uh, thank the board, the committee, uh, Dr. Sarah Larios Mitchell for the acknowledgement. It was 21 years ago that I had this, uh, this event took, took place with the client you'll see in the video, and it was, uh, it's truly, it's truly an honor to be acknowledged for that particular work so long ago, it seems like. I'd like to, uh, also thank my unit supervisor, Pernille Gutzchek, who's in attendance today. Today, I work with Mental Health, Behavioral Health Recovery Services, and I want to thank the county. They provided me with education and training, which has given me tools to continue to provide services in our community. A lot of our clients may be neighbors, friends, relatives, and, uh, I find a lot of satisfaction, rewarding, being able to help these people, uh, with the opportunity the county has given me. So I'd like to thank you all and the people who are in attendance today. Thank you.
Thank you for your, for your remarks and for joining us. So what does your estimation, should we move to another item? Okay. All right. Well, we'll, uh, put that on hold for the time being and, uh, hopefully be able to come back to it. But in the meantime, let's move to Supervisor Groom and Streets Alive, Parks Alive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pine. May 3rd and May 4th is our, San Mateo County's annual Streets Alive, Parks Alive. The participating cities this year are Belmont, Burlingame, Colma, Foster City, Menlo Park, Pacifica, Redwood City, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and Woodside. This is a, a weekend that we designate in San Mateo County for families and to get out to their local park, get out to, uh, one of their community centers, and really celebrate health and fitness with the family. So we have, uh, each city has different, different organization, different, uh, different, uh, events, and we have a video here too. That's really very good. So maybe we can get it...
Looks like it might be there now.
Think we might be able to get it going?
...and enjoy your pick of several outdoor events taking place right here in San Mateo County on May 3rd and 4th. It's called Streets Alive, Parks Alive, and there's a range of free activities across the county, including kite flying, bike rodeos, scavenger hunts, food, and music. Streets Alive, Parks Alive is sponsored by San Mateo County and a host of peninsula cities. It's an annual event that encourages all of us to enjoy everything our communities have to offer while getting some exercise and enjoying the nice weather. Get in on the fun. For more information and a full list of events, visit www.streetsaliveSMC.org, and you can find us on Facebook at facebook.com/streetsaliveparksalive, or call 650-363-4568. Streets Alive, Parks Alive, May 3rd and 4th.
And so, uh, all five of us are involved in organizing this in our various cities, and, um, what I would like to do next is present a proclamation to Julia Bott from the San Mateo County Parks Foundation and Shanae Cunningham from the city of Belmont. And they're going to, uh, talk about the ride in disguise along the Bay Trail.
Good morning, members of the board. Thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Shanae Cunningham. I'm with the city of Belmont Parks and Recreation Department, again with Julia Bott from the County of San Mateo Parks Foundation. Did I get that correctly? Okay. Uh, we are, uh, going to invite all of you to the ride in disguise. This is a tri-city event, starting at, well, really wherever you would like, but the event runs from Coyote Point to the Belmont Sports Complex with stops in San Mateo's Ryder Park and Foster City at East Third. There are also recharge stations along the way, along the Bay Trail. We're inviting you to come on your bikes, decorated, with accessories, with fun, with your families, with your friends, with your neighbors, um, and stop in and see us. There will be different, um, events at each location, including, uh, bike skills course, bikes checkups, a lot of fun summer activity information, athletics, and we're celebrating a lot of our partnerships with our Safe Routes to School program, our Belmont Redwood Shore School District, Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, and, um, we're ready to have a really fun time. This is gonna be Sunday, May 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us, and remember to check out, uh, our Facebook page and our website so you can get, uh, every one of your city's time and location.
Absolutely.
Thank you Supervisor Groom and all involved. This gets bigger every year, so, uh, as long as it doesn't rain. Although...
We had that.
Yes, we've had that in the past. Do we, um, Becky, are we able to try that video? Are we just gonna have to miss that in this meeting? Okay. All right, understood. All right, um, there are two other, uh, proclamations which I'd like to bring forward at this time. First, uh, we have a, uh, proclamation for, for Art Lloyd and Supervisor Groom.
Thank you, and I'm actually gonna turn this over to Supervisor Tissier because she has served with Art, uh, for a very long time on two different boards. But, um, Art Lloyd has been, um, a legend in this county for transport, with transportation issues. He has served on both the SAM Trans Board and the Caltrans, Caltrain JPP Board. He is, um, the most knowledgeable, been, been in transportation all of his career, plus all of his volunteer life. And, uh, not only does, does he make such great contributions, but he's taught all of us a lot of, a lot of wonderful things, and now I'm gonna turn it over to Adrienne.
Thank you, Carol. As Carol mentioned, Art and I served together, I think it's been 10 years now that I've been on those boards, um, both the SAM Trans Board and the Caltrain Board. And, and if you talk to Art, he's a kind and gentle person, very complimentary, but boy, does he know his stuff. He was a mentor to all of us on those boards because his whole life was in transportation. And so if you wanted to know something regarding a train or a bus route, or you name it, he knew it. So we'd always look to him for all the fun facts we really needed to know to get the job done. Art, you were a tremendous colleague on those boards. We're gonna miss you deeply, but we know that you had a great run. Was it 26 years? 26 years. And, you know, he still gives us tips. He calls us and gives us tips when he wants us to know something. Art, we want you to stay in touch and be sure that you, uh, continue to keep an eye on us and make sure we're doing the job right. You will, I knew you would. Well, Art, we have a, a resolution for you, thanking you for your great 26 years of service on both those boards, and, uh, thank you for being the mentor to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. A lot has changed in 26 years in San Mateo County transportation, and certainly along the Caltrain corridor, so we're, uh, grateful for your contribution. Next, I would, um, uh, bring forward a presentation, uh, recognizing the Armenian Genocide Commemoration Day. Uh, this, this proclamation designates April 24th of this year as Armenian Genocide Commemoration Day, and it marks the 99th anniversary of the Armenian genocide of 1915, in which one and a half million Armenians were, were killed by the Ottoman Turkish government. We have, uh, a number of folks from the community, um, here today, which will come forward to, uh, receive the proclamation and, and one speaker as well. So if I could ask, uh, Kachin Tazian, Reverend Khoran, Judy Ginjirian, and John Kavarian to step forward and present to you with this proclamation.
Need a motion?
Sure.
We, we didn't do a motion for you on too, so...
Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, Father Chorin Habesyan, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Bay Area Armenian-American Community and Armenian National Committee of America, we thank the San Mateo Board of Supervisors for your courageous stance on this issue. In support of the truth and historical fact that is the Armenian genocide of 1915 that was perpetrated by the Ottoman Empire against the Armenian minority of, of the time, with the centennial of these horrific crimes against humanity, fast approaching a crime that took the lives of one and a half million innocent men, women, and children in the most gruesome ways possible, we are reminded of the century of denial that has accompanied the tragedies by the heirs of the Ottoman Empire, the current-day Republic of Turkey. In the end, we firmly believe that in the face of denial, justice will prevail. In the face of lies, the truth, and as you have proclaimed it, will win out. Your actions today will have no less meaning in the pursuit of justice for this cause than that of a candle that gives light in the room of darkness, and for that, we thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, today, the last of our survivors of the Armenian genocide are dying, as was the case with, um, Takuhiko Keshishian, a San Mateo County resident who passed away in February of this year. Their passing reminds us that unless we carry a torch to speak the truth about the crimes perpetrated against them, unless we strive to attain justice for their suffering, for future generations will surely repeat these crimes as we have witnessed them throughout the 20th century, from the Jewish Holocaust to Rwanda, to Cambodia, and Sudan. Let us all resolve in the, in the memory of the one and a half million innocent men, women, and children who fell victim to the first genocide of the 20th century, that this proclamation commemorates to stay ever vigilant in educating the young of the horrors of crimes against humanity and of genocide specifically, so as to avert in the 21st century what we were unable to avert repeatedly in the 20th. Thank you once again for your courageous support.
Thank you, Mr. Tazian, for joining us today and, and bringing attention to, to this, uh, these events in history. Our next item is a presentation on employee, employee engagement. I'm sure who's, uh, Donna Allen Court.
Wait for the... Great, thank you. We're gonna hope the technology works. Good morning, President Pine, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malby and Mr. Nivlin. We appreciate the opportunity this morning to report on the progress we're making to, uh, foster an environment of engagement in San Mateo County. Employee engagement is more than just employee satisfaction. It's about having employees who consistently demonstrate that they care about their work and they're committed to the goals and mission of the department and the county. We all recognize that providing outstanding service to the public starts with cultivating a workplace where we have truly engaged employees. One of the first things that we notice when we distribute our annual survey is the response rate. Our response rate has steadily increased over the past three years, about 10 points every year. We think that's a positive sign that our employees are paying attention to the survey, and they want to provide us with this valuable continuous improvement feedback. We're pleased, uh, to see that in the current survey, 75% of our employees rate their experience working for the county as good or very good. And this figure is significantly higher than the International Public Managers Association, which just conducted a survey of local government where it was 58%. And Gallup estimates in the private sector that it's about 30%, but we still think we can make improvement. Here again, our employees rate San Mateo County highly as an employer of choice. In fact, it, this isn't just a good place to work, it's a great place to work. Um, we know that 100% is probably an unrealistic goal, but we think that we can continue to make improvement and reach 90%. The common themes, they're not really surprising for, um, a public service environment. Our employees are committed to service, and they're passionate, um, about serving the community and the sense of accomplishment that that brings. And as you hear every month in the service awards, uh, their coworkers are like family. They feel very connected to their coworkers as well as the community that they serve. We're also not surprised that we continue to see that the improvement opportunities for increasing employee engagement are focused on the perceptions employees have towards their managers and their supervisors. And although there's been improvement over the last three years, we need to continue to support the development, um, of our managers and supervisors in strengthening this vital relationship between them and their employees. So in 2011, we formed the Employee Engagement Committee, and really, their purpose is threefold, to evaluate the annual survey results, uh, to create resources for departments, and to focus on countywide strategies. Our efforts have focused on four deliverables, and it's a mouthful of acronyms here. First, the Essential Supervisory Skills, uh, or ESS. SOS, which is the Supervisor's Online Support Website. Uh, we also have Yammer, which is a online collaboration platform, and finally, the Employee Engagement Website and Guide. And we have a few, uh, very short videos, we hope, uh, that, and, and to tell you about these. First, you'll hear from Ann Wise, our, uh, Training Manager, Kim Cogno, uh, the Deputy Director of Child Support Services, and Julie Gobel, who is our Yammer Administration Network.
Talking about having a highly engaged, energized, highly productive workforce, it is the relationship between the supervisor and employee that is of paramount importance. With that said, the committee wanted to make sure our supervisors have the foundation and resources to develop, to engage, to influence, to develop a highly skilled, highly productive workforce. In 2012, we launched the county's first Essential Supervisory Skill Academy, ESS. It's comprised of four half-day sessions for a total of 16 training hours. The sessions include setting goals for performance, performance coaching, providing value-added feedback to guide performance, and conducting performance evaluations. feedback to guide performance, and conducting performance evaluations. We are very excited to report that over 500 supervisors and managers have participated in this ESS Academy, with over 400 completing all four sessions.
We'd like to also express our sincere appreciation to our leaders, various department heads, who are instructors for these sessions. We have received excellent feedback from our session evaluations. We just concluded our February/March sessions, and will be starting our May/June shortly. Our goal is to have all supervisors and managers complete all four sessions in 2015.
The concept and evolution of the Supervisor Online Support Website was based on feedback from supervisors regarding challenges they face in their roles as leaders. Primarily, they needed one place to access and retrieve pertinent information for onboarding, key policies, personnel, and performance management. The SOS website fulfills that need by providing a one-stop shopping experience for supervisors. The site was launched in March 2013 and is open to all employees. Since that time, we have had over 1,400 visits to the site and have over 850 unique visits, meaning supervisors have accessed particular pages multiple times. Feedback from attendees of the Essential Supervisory Skills Academy expressed this as a useful tool in assisting them in their journey as role models and leaders. I urge all supervisors to visit SOS today.
Yammer is an enterprise social network that allows county employees to connect and collaborate in a private, secure, online environment. A key feature of Yammer is the ability for employees to create and join groups based on their projects, common interests, and expertise. The groups break down silos and provide opportunities to network across the entire organization. We currently have over 120 groups and 1,500 employees, sharing files, creating polls, asking questions, sharing knowledge, and promoting new innovative concepts and initiatives. Yammer's praise functionality allows users to recognize colleagues for a job well done with a colorful badge. Peer recognition is a simple way to recognize strong performers, increase both employee engagement and morale, and help create a culture of gratitude.
And now, I'd like to introduce Masanda Jajans, who is a Senior Internal Auditor, who's going to talk about our guide and engagement site.
Good morning. Two other great employee engagement-centric tools for San Mateo County employees developed by the Employee Engagement Committee are the Employee Engagement Guide, excuse me, the Employee Engagement Website, and the How-to Engage Employees Guide. The website features survey results dating back to 2011, as well as definitions of employee engagement, why it is important, and what the county is doing to support this initiative. The guide outlines how staff at every level of an organization can contribute to an engaged workforce. The guide suggests methods for all staff to create energized environments with transparent and honest communication, recognition, work-life balance, and development opportunities. In addition to countywide services and strategies, many departments began to develop their own employee engagement initiatives. Excuse me. For example, the San Mateo Medical Center created Gratitude Month. The probation department is embarking on an employee development project called Project Boss, and the tax collector celebrates staff with Way to Go. Karen Pugh, Todd Perez, excuse me, Todd Perez, and Sandy Arnott have created videos to illustrate these important initiatives.
Working in healthcare can be really stressful, so it's important for healthcare workers to be able to have an opportunity to build their personal resilience. And there's lots of research that shows that gratitude is actually the key to increasing resilience. So with that in mind, one of our objectives at San Mateo Medical Center is to nurture a culture of gratitude. One of the many ways we do this is by hosting an annual gratitude month in November, and we plan and support a variety of activities that are designed to help providers and staff really connect with each other meaningfully and also connect with patients.
Hi, everyone. My name is Todd Perez, and I'm a supervisor with the probation department. I've been with our department for 25 years. We realize our best employees come from within our department, and we are committed to their growth. That's why we are creating Project Boss. Project Boss is a modern mentoring program that will use collaborative learning to recruit, mentor, and train tomorrow's department leaders through a specific set of values, principles, skills, activities, and goals, while supporting the vision and mission of our chief, the director of Human Resources, and the county manager.
In 2012, the Treasury Tax Collector Revenue Services Office introduced Way to Go. This is a recognition program wherein anyone can recognize anyone for going above and beyond, providing excellent customer service, or displaying departmental team spirit. Although it's always very special to be recognized by your supervisor or manager, there's something very rewarding about being recognized by your coworker. Way to Go allows anyone the opportunity to put a coworker up on a pedestal for just a moment to thank them and show appreciation for the hard work that they do. The department holds a quarterly meeting where each recognition form is read and a certificate of appreciation is provided. Individuals recognized most often receive a Way to Go trophy, which they can display until the next quarterly meeting. At the end of the meeting, everyone is provided healthy snacks, and the names of individuals recognized are placed on our employee recognition plaque, which is out in the department lobby. Overall, I would say that the Way to Go program has been extremely successful in the area of employee engagement within our department.
Good morning. My name is Kim Conyou. I'm the Deputy Director at the Department of Child Support Services. As you heard throughout the presentation, the Employee Engagement Committee and the departments have done a great job to foster an environment of engagement, but there is still work to do. A few of our future engagement efforts are as follows. Flexible Work Environment. Some of the feedback received from the Employee Engagement Survey spoke to the value and appreciation of a flexible work environment. The Employee Engagement Committee will explore resources, tools, and information that can assist leaders in determining how and if a flexible work environment is possible in their workplace. Employee Videos. What better way to capture the essence of why employees believe the county of San Mateo is a great place to work than to ask them? The Employee Engagement Committee will video staff following Employee of the Month presentations and its service awards. The videos will be used to illustrate employee engagement, promote our branding, and to draw potential new hires to choose a career path in public service at the county of San Mateo. Essential Supervisory Skills Part II. We will continue the momentum with the Essential Supervisory Skills by offering Part II in 2015, where we will work to reinforce training models and continue to support our supervisors in their succession planning. Moving forward, the Employee Engagement Committee will continue to meet every other month to help lead and focus the effort. However, we urge each and every county employee to share their positive solutions to improving the workplace. Even small changes can yield big results.
Okay, thank you, Kim. So just in closing, a few special thank yous to our engagement committee members. Many of you are here today. Can you stand so that we can acknowledge your great work? Also, to Marissa King and Julie Gobel from HR, they were the creative geniuses, the magicians behind the curtains for the presentation, so thank you so much for all that you do. You inspire me. And finally, to your board and the county manager and our department head, thank you for continuing to support employee engagement and making San Mateo County an employer of choice. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for the panel court?
No wonder. Every time Service Awards, employees seem to be so happy, and they seem to really support each other, so it's no wonder. This is a great project.
Perfect. Great, okay.
I too just want to say thank you. You've done a terrific job, all of you, and you're right. I think we see the results of it at our Service Awards. I thought it was us, but now I find out it's the employees. So I'm sort of disappointed, but we'll have a disappointment committee later. Anyway, thank you very much. You've done a human's job.
Right. Superintendent Tazian, I do have a Way to Go Award for you. But I thank you, Don, and the Employment Engagement Committee for all your work. We are only as good as our employees, and this is very important for us to keep focused on engagement and making sure that everyone is feeling rewarded and productive in what they do here. So thank you. Okay, we had three items that were removed from the consent counter, which I'd suggest we take now if there's no objection. The first is item 19 concerning Brias. I understand that was removed. Mr. Malpe?
Jean's coming forward, and I think she has some comments to make on that item.
Members of the board, an issue has been raised this morning, which I do think is important for us to deal with, so I am going to ask, and I wasn't able to do it before this time, so I am going to ask that we postpone this until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll look forward on May 6th. Thank you for your efforts there. And Superintendent Horsley, item 26 and 27.
I'd be glad to talk about, we can take both of them at the same time. I just thought these were, rather than being a consent, I thought it was important for us to actually highlight the work that has been done by, well, Supervisor Groom and I, as well as Supervisor Slocum. And the first one really has to do, well, first of all, has to do with the RDA funding. We received about a little over 13 million back from RDA funding through the CMO's office and direction from the board, and came up with a process, and we actually have distributed all that money out, too, for affordable housing. And the two projects that actually Supervisor Groom and I worked on extensively, really, it has to do with the shelter over on Maple Street. And again, I'm sorry for having to tell the story, but originally, this used to be work furlough, and we had prisoners there. And I remember at the time, it was Mike Nevin and I and the county manager decided that what we should do is, instead of having 70 people go out every day to work and then come back at nighttime, and where we fed them and had staff to guard them, that we should turn that into an electronic home monitoring program. And while we were not very successful at that, and I continue to be interested in that, and I continue to, especially for women with children, I just think that electronic home monitoring for women with children under five years of age, under the right circumstances, I think is actually an adequate sanction. But nevertheless, what happened after that is that Mike and myself worked with the city of Redwood City, and they were somewhat reluctant, and we turned the shelter into a homeless facility. And currently, it provides emergency housing for 23 men, 10 women, and then transitional housing for 27 men, and about a third of these people in this facility are veterans. So Supervisor Groom and I, when we worked together on the project, the HOPE Task Force, originally set aside some money for veterans' housing, essentially 100,000 initially, even before we got the RDA money. And then, both of us have worked with InVision Shelter Network, and when the sheriff actually builds that new facility, it's going to be a much better facility for the people who are incarcerated. I think there are going to be a lot of programs that give people opportunities to, you know, change the behaviors that got them in the jail in the first place. But in any case, we started talking about what could we do with at least, not the jail part, but the portion that is currently used for administrative housing, and I think they have some weekenders and what's called the Sheriff's Work Program. They put about 500 people on various work projects, great program that the Sheriff's Department operates. And so, this 26 dedicates about $2.2 million to Shelter Network and InVision. They will remodel the facility, and it will have capacity, it will almost double its capacity. The emergency housing will be for 36 men, 18 women, transitional 60 men, 30 women, handicapped medical beds for six men and four women. And so, that's doubling the capacity. And again, it's about a third of the people who were in that facility are veterans. And the back half, which is actually a modular facility, you know, we've talked about using that as a potential temporary housing. For example, when we had those fires in Redwood City, it could, you know, it's a pretty decent modular, we could conceivably use that as emergency housing for those kinds of circumstances. So I just want to, I thought we should highlight that, and I don't know if Supervisor Groom wants to speak at all about it, but this is a, I think is a great project that she and I've worked on for about the last year. And then later, Supervisor Slocum is working on with a project we hope, which now is going to be a year-round facility for the homeless in East Palo Alto. East Palo Alto, Redwood City have an inordinate number of homeless people, so I just thought that it should be highlighted. This is really good work on the part of the board and specific board members, and also the, you know, the county manager had a direct hand in this as well. So I wanted to thank him and thank Bill Lowell from our Housing Department.
That's all I wanted to add, is that when we listened to month after month at our Housing People Effectively Hope meetings, we just continued to learn that there were more veterans, there were more women, there were more moderately mentally ill people that we just didn't have a transition emergency shelter for. And so, we talked to Shelter Network, and Shelter Network, Brian especially, and Cory Lyle, they never say no. They just always say, sure, let's sit down and figure out a way to work this out. And Bill Lowell, also, the Director of the Housing Department, there's never a no. It's always, yeah, let's figure out a way to do this. And so I think we're on our way to really solving a huge need that we have in this county.
Thank you, Supervisor Horsley and Groom. And I want to add my thanks to Mr. Lowell, who has just done a, really, an outstanding job in working with various organizations to get this money out and get these beds in place. I did want to add a footnote to Supervisor Horsley's presentation. As you know, when the new jail, the Maple Street Correction Center, is opened and we expand the facility at the present site for homeless shelter, the long-term understanding we have with the city of Redwood City is that we would eventually relocate that homeless shelter to a different site. I've had a number of conversations with the city. They understand that we have to have a site approved in place and ready to be opened before we vacate the site. They're anxious to work with us to do that and are, in fact, working with us. And I think whatever the new site is, and I suspect it's probably three to five years away, will really be a state-of-the-art facility, and I think we all look forward to that day as well. As you know, this site has a number of limitations, even with the improvements that we're going to make. It's very low, it's subject to flooding, and as climate change and the rising oceans result in floods more often in that site. So we do think there's a better location somewhere in this vicinity. We'll work with Redwood City to make that happen, and we'll have that in place before this facility's closed.
Can I, can Bill Lowell speak? I don't know if Dr. Bryan wants to say anything, or he does.
Good morning, everyone. I think the projects have already been summarized very well, and I just wanted to add one update that had just come in. And that is, on the Small Side Acquisition, Women's Recovery Association has withdrawn their application. Basically, it was very productive, very polite. They just went through a merger, I think it was effective last week, and they feel like they have quite a bit on their plate at the moment, and looking for another house this year is too much. And so they actually will not accept the award and withdraw the application.
That's the award for the 250,000?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Mr. President, could I make a comment on this? I called Bill Lowell yesterday because I saw that, actually before I found out that they were withdrawing, and I had commented that, you know, InVision Shelter Network had asked for 2 million, and we gave them 195, and could we up at the 50,000? Then he indicated to me that they, in fact, Women's Recovery is not going to be utilizing the funds, and I thought it seemed appropriate at this time to turn those dollars over to InVision Shelter Network, so that, you know, they've got a huge project in Daly City that's going to take a lot more than the $2 million to renovate the first shelter that ever took place for Shelter Network, and that is the Family Crossroads. So I would like to ask the board if we could So, I would like to ask the Board if we could take the money that WRA was going to utilize and put that in with Shelter Network, and let them continue. They're doing a lot of fundraising, they've got a lot on their plate, but every little bit's going to help, so.
I'd certainly make that motion.
So, let me do this first. I'll make a motion to approve item number 26, which is the allocation of affordable housing funds to support shelter expansion and improvement projects.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, you're moving a little too fast.
Oh, I always do that.
And I would suggest you just hold back a little bit here.
Mr. Supervisor.
For a minute, I will.
Okay, I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the other day, I had an opportunity to go with Pastor Baines and Bryan to a place in Palo Alto, maybe you've visited, called the Opportunity Center, which, for me, was a brand-new experience. It was quite eye-opening, and I was just amazed at the job that they do there. We also took a tour of Haven House, which is another amazing place for families. And I learned, and you may already know this, so forgive me, but that the WE HOPE Shelter in East Palo Alto is the only facility of its kind between, I think, San Jose and East Palo Alto. And that coupled with the fact that East Palo Alto has the largest per capita homeless population of any city in San Mateo County, makes this WE HOPE Shelter really a critical part of the region's, I think, homeless asset inventory. And one of the statistics that I was quite amazed at in my research was that WE HOPE not only provides shelter, dental care, healthcare, showers, and laundry facilities for homeless folks, but they've also served nearly 400,000, that's 400,000 meals to the people that they serve, which is pretty remarkable. I don't know if you've, I know Supervisor Horsley, where I and I were at the WE HOPE Shelter a few months ago, or it seems like a few months ago.
That was.
It was actually Thanksgiving, maybe. I can't remember, but in any event, through, I think, a misunderstanding between WE HOPE and the county, WE HOPE had asked for $490,000, which is on your agenda for today to vote on. But I would ask that we, that maybe the county manager and staff could look into upping that to $1.5 million. That would be the difference between the 490 and 1.9, whatever that math works out to, with the thought being that that additional money would allow WE HOPE to actually buy the facility that they're in, the entire building there. That would save them approximately $70,000 because of rental expenses, and it would allow perhaps an income stream because there are some one or more tenants there. So, I know that money would have to come from Measure A because the allocations have already been made and used from the money that we approved some months ago. But I would ask that we, the county manager's office, look into supplementing that 490,000 up to 1.5 million to possibly allow for the purchase of that entire building in East Palo Alto.
All right, so just for clarification, so in the current proposal, we're allocating the 490, which we would take action on today, and then the instruction is for the county manager to look at possibilities in connection with, you know, budget updates later in the spring to bring forward a proposal? Okay.
That's right.
Okay. I wanted to make a remark or two as well. I'm glad Supervisor Horsley brought this off the consent counter because it does warrant some focus. I'm very pleased that we are, you know, investing in the Crossroads Project. I had the opportunity to tour that facility, as of course did Supervisor Tissier, and InVision does remarkable work there. And, you know, the North County sometimes, you know, doesn't get as much focus as perhaps it might, and this project is really important for the North County, and we're really fortunate that we've been able to put these monies aside for projects as worthy as this. I'd also invite anyone from InVision Shelter Network if they'd like to make a remark or two.
Thank you. I'm Brian Greenberg from InVision Shelter Network. We're incredibly grateful for your support. I want to thank Christine Krollick, our Board member, for being here, Amy Wright, our Development Director. You know, we really believe that, you know, shelters like Project WE HOPE and Maple Street, and the family shelters like Haven and Family Crossroads, they impact not only the people that they serve, but the entire community. I mean, we're, I really, we really believe that we're visibly and positively impacting the community in a manner that goes far beyond the shelters. You know, every time we do a one-day homeless count in San Mateo County, there's virtually no unsheltered families on the street, no minor children. And it's because of your support of the Motel Voucher Program, the family shelters, and the other shelters, that that's possible. It's really an incredible accomplishment that surrounding counties can't claim, and we're grateful, we're proud, and we're appreciative. Thank you.
Mr. President, perhaps Pastor Baines would like to say a few words.
I just want to echo what Dr. Greenberg has said. Without the county's support, there are people, particularly, I can speak for East Miller Park and East Palo Alto, that are saying that the county is really stepping up and helping us, not with the hand out, but with the hand up. And we have so many different testimonies from the various shelters in the county to just people who come to life because they feel that they're not being left, they're not left, being left behind. And I cannot express enough of the support that you all have given the East Palo Alto, East Miller Park community with coming by, with listening to what we have to say, and listening to what the clients are saying, and taking it to heart, and putting your vote, and putting the money behind it, the resources behind it. So, we appreciate that. With us, we would love to purchase our building because then we would have additional income as well as we'd be able to be sustainable for years to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Baines.
I'm just wondering if either Bryan or Christine could give us a little update on what the total cost, or roughly what we think it's going to take to get Family Crossroads rehabilitated? Do we have any rough numbers? I just want to give a sense of the impact of what this is going to do for Family Crossroads by utilizing the funds on our item number 27.
So, we're increasing the number of families from 13 to 14 because there'll be economies of space so that the case managers, children's services coordinator, those kinds of things. So, it's going to increase by one unit. As you're probably aware, we have secured a forgivable E-HAP loan that we did get an extension on for $1 million. And there's a discrepancy on whether we'll have to increase the size of the elevator shaft, or whether we can just replace the one that's there that does fit a wheelchair or a person with a walker. So, there's some issues with that, but it's just under $3 million, or just $3 million, depending on some nuances in the plans.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further comments before we have motions on these items?
I was going to, I was going to just add one thing about the Opportunity Center. When, after a HOPE meeting, Don and I were kind of brainstorming, and we both thought that maybe a Delancey Street kind of format would be the thing that we would like to look at. And lo and behold, when Bryan took us to the Opportunity Center, there it was, exactly what we were talking about, not knowing that it existed. So, nothing like being, imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. So, we're very, we're very pleased also to go on a tour of the Opportunity Center. So, I'm going to try to make a motion.
I do have one speaker, if I might. Mr. Fox.
Thank you again for your service to the county, President Pine, and members of the Board. I guess my question is really directed to Mr. Malpe, and arises out of his memo of last July about Measure A funds and their use to improve the network of care for veterans. And I agree that housing is an issue with veterans. In August, the Department of Defense announced that 100,000 troops were going to be coming home before the end of this year. Last spring, the Cal-Vet Secretary announced that it was taking 90 days to get notice of the discharge of individuals. There is a huge gap that veterans are going to fall into, and these are veterans of multiple deployments, and it's going to be the effect of a layoff. If you're going to use the Measure A funds for something like this, I think that it would be appreciated if you'd reconsider using some other kinds of funds to fill this gap because we're going to see thousands of veterans before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Because I'm going to make a, may I, Mr. Niblin, can I make a motion including 26 and 27 at the same time?
You may want to do 27 different because we're going to amend 27.
I was going to amend them all at the same time because we want to amend 26, too.
Okay. I would do one.
Okay.
In terms of whether it's legal or not, you could, in fact, if there's a way to structure something that meets everyone's desires and needs.
Okay, the President wants them done separately, so that's what I'll do.
I think it'd be easier.
Also, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution for item number 26 that takes the... adds...
I had my chance.
I did have my chance. That provides 252,000 for the Safe Harbor Shelter, 2.2 million for Maple Street, and initially 490,673 for Project WE HOPE, with the suggestion that we take 1.5 million from Measure A and add that to the Project WE HOPE site.
I just want to clarify the motion. I think we're asking for the county manager to bring back a proposal on that, and is it 1.1 or 1.5?
It's actually 1.1, I think, is the difference. What my intention would be is, on June 17th, I believe, we'll have a budget midpoint update in which I intended to bring a few Measure A proposals back for the Board's consideration. I would include that in, at that time, if it's what the Board's desire.
So, I would add that, I would change that to 1.1 million to be considered in June to add to the Project WE HOPE.
All right, so we have a motion and a second motion, Supervisor Slocum. All in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously, and then we'll have a motion for item 27.
I'll make the motion. If we could take, approve the entire sum, I think it was 2.2 million, and put that towards InVision Shelter Network, which would be utilizing the money that would have been for Women's Recovery Association.
Second.
Motion, so again, so we're moving the funds that were originally appropriated to Women's Recovery over...
There was 250,000, and they are not going to utilize that, so.
Right, to bring that total up to 2.2 million. All right, so a motion made by Supervisor Tissier and seconded by Supervisor Horsley. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a second by Supervisor Groom, if you'd like, but...
Thirded.
All right. All right, very good, very exciting developments. We'll now move to a matter set for a specified time, and the first one will be a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 21B concerning the Planned Colma District and Chapter 28.1 Design Review Districts.
Good morning, President Pine, members of the Board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Niblin. I'm Steve Monowitz from the Planning and Building Department, and I'm pleased to have this opportunity to introduce one of our long-range planners, Mr. Will Gibson. As you may know, Mr. Gibson is the Planning and Building Department's lead on matters pertaining to the county's general plan housing element. And the item before you today is one of many projects that he manages in order to achieve and maintain compliance with state housing laws. So, I'd like to ask him to do the presentation, please.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, Mr. Niblin. This is an appropriate transition to a little more discussion about shelters. So, the item before you is an amendment to the zoning regulations for the Planned Colma District, allowing emergency shelters as a use by right in those areas designated high-density and medium-high-density residential. And this project has been before you before in February, and at that time, the Board heard the item and directed us to do a little more work to apply some design standards to emergency shelters. And we have done so, and that's why we're back before you today. So, given that this has been before you previously, I'm just going to go very briefly through the background, and then we can discuss the changes very briefly as well. So, this proposed amendment to allow emergency shelters in Planned Colma is a response to a law passed by the State of California back in 2007, and that law essentially says that every jurisdiction must have an area set aside where emergency shelters are allowed by right without any form of discretionary approval. In the 2007 to 2014 housing element, we did designate the Planned Colma District as an appropriate location for that policy, and we committed to pursuing it, and the Board on adopting the housing element directed us to come forward with this amendment. And here is the location. It is unincorporated Colma, the Planned Colma or PC District, but again, it's only those areas that are designated high-density or medium-high-density residential, and emergency shelters in those areas would be subject to all of the normal zoning regulations and building regulations that otherwise apply. However, as noted, the purpose of this state law is to ensure that essentially jurisdictions can't arbitrarily deny shelters that are proposed, and for that reason, we are not allowed to apply any discretionary standards, although I think this was noted at the last board hearing, and I think the folks that were in the room previously would agree, we do a pretty good job, we try to do it right, but the state is making a kind of blanket statement that they want to ensure that all jurisdictions don't have the ability to turn down shelters without reason. So, currently, in the Planned Colma District, developments are subject to a mix of ministerial design standards, which, non-discretionary design standards and discretionary design standards. Because we are not allowed to apply discretionary standards to emergency shelters, our initial proposal was to exempt those shelters from design review entirely. However, while the Board was largely in favor of the proposal otherwise at the last hearing, you did express some concern that shelters would be entirely exempt from design standards and directed us to draft some and return. That is what we've done at this point, and in essence, what we did was, we went through the Planned Colma design standards, extracted all of those that could be applied without discretion, and applied those specifically to emergency shelters. And as it turns out, actually, most of the standards in the Planned Colma regulations can be applied on a ministerial basis without discretion. So, by making those changes, we have, I believe, addressed the Board's concern about shelters being exempt, also applied a very similar set of standards to those that already apply to similar developments in the Planned Colma District, as well as meeting both the intent and the letter of the state law to keep us in compliance with the purpose of this regulation. And the standards are discussed in the staff report and included in the ordinance. Essentially, that is the only change from this item from the last time that you reviewed it. We've added the design standards, but all other aspects of their proposal remain essentially the same. And so, I'm not going to talk through all of the changes that are included in the ordinance, but they're listed here. And as you can see, essentially, most of the Planned Colma design standards are included here. It regulates building form, orientation, facades, roofs, landscaping, so the important structural elements will still apply to emergency shelters. We have completed environmental review of this project. We circulated... We have completed environmental review of this project, we circulated an initial study and a negative declaration for the project, received no comments on that, and in fact, we've received no comments on this proposed amendment whatsoever. With that, staff recommends that the board adopt the proposed amendments and certify the negative declaration as complete and correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We do need to convene a hearing on this. Does anyone wish to speak on the matter?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Although I don't see it here on my sheet, I will move to adopt the resolution, or introduce the ordinance, I guess that's.
And certify the negative declaration.
Certify the negative declaration.
And I'll second that. So motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, and Mr. Monowitz. Our next item is a resolution concerning the cancellation of certain authorized but unissued general obligation bonds of the Jefferson Union High School District in the amount of $37,400,000.
Great, thank you. Just a few words about this. The Education Code provides after a school district board of trustees and voters of a district have authorized the issuance of, the sale of bonds, mandates the board of supervisors to take action to offer the bonds for sale. Sort of on the flip side of that, the Education Code also states that when the bonds that have been authorized for sale have been outstanding for a specified period of time, at least six months, the board of trustees of the affected district may petition the board to cancel any bonds that have been authorized for sale that remain unsold. When the board receives that kind of a petition, the board of supervisors, and determines it's in the best interest of the school district to cancel the unsold bonds, the board of supervisors can order the cancellation of those bonds. In this particular case, we're dealing with bonds that were authorized for sale back in 2006 by the Jefferson Unified High School Dist, I'm sorry, the Jefferson Union High School District. These were bonds pursuant to their Measure N, again, that was adopted back in 2006. It's about $136,900,000 in bonds that were authorized for facility improvements. About $95 million in Measure N bonds have actually been issued. The district board of trustees, however, determined recently that it wasn't economical to issue any more of those Measure N bonds, and what they did in response to that is adopt a resolution calling for an election on a new issuance of bonds, Measure E, which the board of, which the electors of the, of that particular district approved in 2012. In connection with approving Measure E, however, the, the board of trustees and the electors chose to include a requirement that for every Measure E bond, so every dollar of Measure E bonds sold, an equal amount of Measure N bonds would be canceled. Therefore, what you've got in front of you right now is a petition from the board of trustees of the Jefferson District to cancel $37,400,000 in Measure N bonds, given that that's the amount of Measure E bonds that have been sold to date. We've prepared a resolution that would implement this cancellation if the board sees fit to adopt it, and that's the request that you've gotten from the high school district.
I just had one question. I probably missed the obvious, but they obviously moved the funds from one, one bond to another, and again, what was the purpose of that?
The underlying reasons, I understand, and again, I'm not frankly as conversant with the nuances of all this, it was determined that it was no longer economically appropriate to, to issue bonds pursuant to Measure N owing to some changes in the law. It was more cost-effective, and it would result in better rates to issue a new bond series.
Again, we have a public hearing on this matter. Any, any comments from board members or the audience?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Again, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are all in your favor, okay. Then we can go forward to item eight, which is a resolution approving the county subsidy priorities, presented by the San Mateo County Child Care Partnership Council, which I have the opportunity to serve on with Norma Dilman. So, Norma, thank you for coming today.
Thank you, President Pine, and members of the board, and Mr. Malpe, and Mr. Niblin. Periodically, we come to the county with this request to take a look at subsidy priorities. It's something that is part of the mandated duties of the Child Care Partnership Council, which is really the county's body under the auspices of both the board of supervisors and the county superintendent, to plan for early care and education, to advise the board on, on laws and bills that are pending that might affect our system, and to look for ways to coordinate the services so that we really are using the dollars the best way we can. There is a local planning council in every county, and they have certain mandates in state law, and this one today is one of those mandates. Basically, we're, are to provide to the California Department of Education a list of ZIP codes that the county determines are the areas where there's the, the greatest gap, where there's the greatest need for additional subsidized childcare and early learning spaces, in this case for state preschool for three- and four-year-olds, and for infants and toddlers in full-day care in programs. These are spaces designated for low-income children that meet the, the county, the state threshold for income. So the, basically, the state has a formula, a process for doing this for a county of our size, and the partnership council has followed through with that process and analyzed the data according to those rules, and is coming to you with the proposed priorities one, two, and three for those ZIP codes. Basically, what we do is to take a look at census data, American Community Survey data, in this case for 2012, and to determine the number of, the estimated number of children who are eligible for state subsidy in, in each of the ZIP codes, and then we look at all of the available subsidized spaces in state-funded programs and in Head Start, and figure out what's the gap, and then there's a certain determination, how many kids need to be unserved and how many, what percentage to reach a priority one, two, or three. Mr. Malpe asked me a little bit about how, how this mapping looks when, when compared to the Big Lift data that you have seen. Really, the Big Lift data is using the same data sources, and so it's mapping over those communities very, very, very similarly. The main difference is that the lens for the Big Lift is really child outcomes down the line at third grade. If we're looking at how kids are doing now at third grade in different communities in their reading and their math skills, we want to do something with the Big Lift to affect their chances to really be successful in school in the future, and one of the big strategies is to increase the services for three- and four-year-olds, and particularly to increase the quality. One of the differences with the state subsidies is that the income eligibility criteria is pretty darn low for a county as high-cost as San Mateo County, so there's a whole swath of children that are not eligible for those spaces that in the Big Lift we are hoping to serve, but the communities in which this is taking place really map very much upon those Big Lift communities, but the lens is going to be which are those communities and districts that have, have the lower scores in, in, in reading and, and in, in math development, and which are the schools, communities that have more schools in the one through three, so they're struggling schools, essentially. So that's kind of the difference between the two. The other little thing that I would add is that by give, by giving these priorities to the state, if there is new funding in state preschool or infant toddler, they may decide to use these priorities to look at in, in ranking the proposals that come in. They have, I hesitate to say, sometimes chosen not to do that, and have, have decided to direct the funds in a different way, so all we can do is, is give them our, our best information, and it, it does help communities in their efforts to raise funds or funds for facilities, things like that, to be able to say, we are, we are one of the priority ZIP codes in, in San Mateo County, and so it, it is helpful within the community itself as well. So, take any questions, or just hold off for the hearing.
Any, any questions for?
Just had one question. If I could figure out how to rotate this chart, it did indicate there are some kids in Atherton, like eight, that were, and is that because of Selby Lane School?
Exactly, really it is, that it borders a low-income community, and ZIP codes don't always capture what we would hopefully like them to capture, and even in, in school district boundaries, too. Yeah.
Portola Valley is probably, is it because of the Tinsley kids?
Well, you know, yes, in, in one sense, some of the communities rise to a priority level because they have no subsidized services at all, and there are low-income children that live in those communities. We might not prioritize them, say, for the Big Lift. Hopefully, their communities are prioritizing the children, but in terms of following the state formula, some communities that we don't traditionally think of as, as, as having a lot of low-income kids, they actually, they actually do have pockets of low-income children with no state subsidized services and no Head Start in them.
Interesting.
Because they haven't been priorities in the past. Also, you might notice, we, we put a column with, of what were the priorities in the last time we did this, which was 2009, and you'll see there's some changes. Some of those may reflect demographic shifts in terms of very low-income families moving to other communities or out of our county, or, you know, various things that, that we are, we are all feeling and seeing, so.
Thank you, Norma. We're fortunate to have you working on these matters. I'm always amazed by just how incredibly technical and kind of Byzantine some of these regulations are, and they don't really
How true.
They don't fit our county very well, and, and you do your best to help us navigate through them. We're, I enjoyed very much working with you on the Child Care Partnership Council, and you know, you're an incredible asset to the county, so appreciate, appreciate your work very much.
One more, I have to, for, on the South Coast, Pescadero, it looks like the numbers are actually, I think they're actually larger than you have here, would be my experience.
One of the things we always say about South Coast and, to some extent, East Palo Alto and, and, and the coast side generally, is that it's, it's easy for their, we seem to have a census undercount kind of problem there because of the not, sort of non-standard housing and, and transient, well, it's not that folks are transient particularly, but their housing is, is, many families fitting into places and whether they're, they're able to be counted sufficiently, so we tend to ratchet it up. We, we have a lot of concerns about meeting the needs of South Coast. The challenges there for, in some senses, for new funding, is that because it's a small population, it's hard to pull together a center, enough kids for a center, and, but they really want to have full-day services and infant toddler services in, in the South Coast badly, so we are trying to, well, they, they might not get the direct contract to kind of work it in other ways to, to get the needs of that special population met.
Maybe we can't talk about a center at a later point.
Yes, yes.
With the Big Lift.
In, in a combination of a community center, maybe, and the whole, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Norma.
We do have a public hearing. Don't believe there's any comments from the public.
I'll move to close the public hearing. I just had one quick question for Mr. Malpe. You know, with all this dashboarding we're doing and all, to look at the services and all this area, is there any, going to be any kind of overlay so we can see what's happening in our schools, and then what's happening with HSA and those other services for probably the same families that?
Let me check, that, that's a good question.
Here's been the motion to close the public hearing. I'll second that. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, and motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Seconded by Supervisor Groom. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I suggest we take a five-minute break before we come back for the next items. Okay, we'll reconvene the, the board of supervisors' meeting and move to item nine, which is a report on the fire station replacement options, and Mr. Jim Porter from Public Works.
Thank you, President Pine, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Niblin. We are here today to ask direction from your board on which option to pursue on two fire stations that will be reconstructing. One is in Skylonda, and one is in Pescadero. So I have a very wonderful presentation we'll go through, and then we'll discuss those options. Let's start out in Skylonda. Skylonda is, is up near the intersection of, of Skyline Boulevard and Highway 84. The map shows where it is. It's, it's up in Four Corners, kind of by Alice's Restaurant, right in that area there. One of the issues with the station is access for the, or actually entering and exit for the fire trucks as they leave the station. As you can see from that short set of pictures, the, the fire engines can't make a turn without going into the opposite lane, so that's something that we'd like to address as part of this project. The other issue with the, with the structures up there is they're very old and they are beginning to fail. In the barracks area, we're seeing separation from interior and exterior walls, and part of that is due to the, the location where it's built. On the right-hand photograph, you'll see a tree and kind of a headerboard that's, was meant to keep up that tree. Those, those features are starting to work their way down the hill, and what we believe is going on is, is the hill moves, the, the barracks is beginning to, to come apart, so we need to address those issues. The other problem with the site is that the barracks is about 300 feet from the apparatus room, and so when the firefighters get a call, particularly at night, they have to run up to, to the engines. In that area up in Skylonda, they do get ice and pretty, pretty tough conditions, so that is an issue for safety, for, a safety issue for the firefighters accessing their equipment. The other issue is the apparatus building itself. That has been modified over the years to include several different functions, including their decontamination room, they've got their self-contained breathing apparatus up there and a variety of different functions that have been integrated into that building. A larger problem, though, is the septic leach field, which is shown in red here. Sometime in the past, that was paved over, and that becomes a problem for that leach field and its ability to drain and process waste, so that leach field eventually does need to be replaced. So we looked at three options. Option A is to replace the barracks and office building at its current location so that we would maintain the general site layout. The other option, which is option B, is to build a new combined barracks and office building across from the apparatus structure, and basically abandon the existing buildings in play, well, we would demolish them. And then the third option was a quest for a new site in that area. So we'll go through those options right now. So option A would be to replace them in site. That would provide better buildings, but it doesn't address the issue of the distance between essentially the housing and offices to the apparatus building, but we have looked at that, and that option is, is one for your board to consider. Option two is to build a new structure across from the apparatus building. We would look at the sloped area just on the other side We would look at the sloped area just on the other side of the asphalt for that building, combine the office building and the barracks into one structure. That makes for a essentially a flat surface for the firefighters to access their apparatus when they get a call. And it just makes the site function a little bit better. In terms of that approach, we're looking at a phased approach. So if if we go along those lines, I, when I started the presentation, I mentioned some of the site problems for entering and exiting the location. What we would recommend in this case is that we came in as part of phase one and we built a new office barracks building across from the apparatus building. So that would be the first phase of the project. Then on a second phase, we would come in and take out the existing office building and barracks building. So we would demolish those. We would create a new driveway at about that location so that the vehicles had better entry and exit onto Skyline Boulevard. And also, as part of that phase, we would install a new leach field on that site in about the location where the existing office and barracks buildings are. And then as part of phase three, we would build a new apparatus building. So there is a way to address the immediate problems with the housing in the office and address some of the other issues at a later date. And then option C, we we worked with real property to look at other properties in the area. And unfortunately, we could not find another alternate site. So although that option was studied, it really is not a viable option at this time because there's no property within their their area that they serve that would work for a new fire station. So in summary, replacing the barracks and office building only at their current site location would cost about $6.2 million. Now, that seems like a lot of money, and I'll tell you that these estimates are very conservative. What our estimators have done is looked at other fire stations in the area, both rural and urban, and looked at average square foot costs and basically applied that to what we think the program could look like for this building. Those are all in costs. That's construction management, design, and construction. So that would be an estimate for that. Option B, which is the phased approach, would cost about $6.4 million to build that combined barracks office building across from the apparatus structure. So it's very close in terms of cost to option one. The other phases of the project add cost to it. So for us to go in and demolish the old structures, build that new driveway and construct a leach field, we're estimating another $1.006. And then for phase three, which would be a new apparatus building, we're estimating another $4.2 million. So if the board chooses this approach, we would suggest going with phase one and then waiting to a later date to do phases two and three. I'm sorry. And then option C, of course, is to build a new station in another site, but that is not really a viable option. Now we'll move on to Pescadero.
We might want to take questions on this one before.
We'll take some questions.
Before we move forward.
I just had a quick question on the different phases. If you did want to do something where you, at the end of the day, you just clean up the whole site and you go to phase, the second fa, option, option B. When you talk about phases two and three and you say, we'll work through those at a later date, is there a timeframe that you would want to try to get all three phases done if you were to choose this one? Are we talking a three-year, five-year, 10-year?
Through the President, that would, that would really be at the discretion of the board and and what's available in terms of funding. Currently, for the Skylonda project, we have about $4 million budgeted right now. So whatever option we pursue is going to take an additional appropriation to complete. If we were to build phase two, we would suggest doing it within a reasonable amount of time, within a year or two, possibly three, after we complete the barracks and office. But again, if the board would like to accelerate that, we can certainly accelerate that.
And phase two has the issue about the leach fields, correct?
That's correct. We would address the leach field as part of phase three. Part of the problem with the current leach field is not only the fact that it's been paved over, but the office and the barracks are at a lower elevation than the leach field right now. So to transport the waste up to the leach field, there's a pump. And the pump has failed. And that causes flooding in the offices. So one of the benefits of building the office building and barracks at the same elevation or higher than the leach field is you remove that pump and you get into a gravity flow system. So that's why there is an ability to phase that part of the work because we will address that pump problem immediately if this project is, or if this option is pursued.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, oh, go ahead, Mr. Porter.
I was just going to ask a one little question about phase two. By demolishing the old structure, creating a new drive, does that allow them to get their rig on the road faster? I assume it does.
I would defer to CAL FIRE. I believe it would, but I I'll defer to CAL FIRE on that. Yes, it sounds like it would.
It would, okay. And it would also create new leach field?
Yes, phase two, as part of the site work, we would have put in a new leach field as part of that, as part of that phase.
Okay. So my question, Mr. Porter, is under under option A, you're you're not proposing to replace the apparatus building at any time?
That can be done at a at a later date, similar to option B. We're not showing it in the graphics here. But the way that we've structured the project is that replacement of the apparatus building is kind of a standalone project that can either be done concurrently with the barracks and office or at a later date. So we've tried to structure this to.
So in some, in some respects, then, the phase three and phase three under option B would would be applicable in A as well. I mean, it, I guess the question is, I I assume we need a new apparatus facility, particularly given we're buying all this new equipment, right?
Yes, President Pine, again, CAL FIRE can probably speak better to this. But my understanding is the engines, the new engines that are being used are taller than the current engines. And they have trouble getting these engines in and out of the current apparatus structure.
Yeah, I might suggest, if Justin Chief, maybe you could come and speak just on this one, and we'll bring you back to speak on the other. But why don't we just kind of finish our questions on this item so while it's fresh?
To clarify, for the engines, they are taller and longer, mainly due to California emission standards now. The current App Bay won't house that. I believe in year three, we have allocated for the replacement of the engine up there at Skylonda. So we're obviously trying to make that replacement, you know, concurrent with the the apparatus bay and station rebuild. We would have, you know, obviously, security issues leaving an engine outside. But also, you know, you're talking almost a three-quarter million-dollar piece of equipment that, as was stated before, the weather up there is very harsh. So it's it's tough.
Justin, when is the new equipment coming online? Is it, did you say a year or two years?
Yes, so equipment takes roughly a year to to come in once it's ordered. Chief Jalbert has proposed his 10-year plan, obviously laid out, you know, two years at a time through Measure A. The first years don't send any equipment to Pescadero or Skylonda because of the anticipated rebuild. So we're actually sending equipment to the one house that we currently have that can actually house it. And then the idea is, you know, as new equipment comes in, that it go to the appropriate houses, you know, that can actually house the equipment. So, you know, trying to lay the program out, you know, in sync.
Thanks.
Yeah. Did that answer the apparatus?
I had another question for you, too. So, you know, with with option A, of course, the difficulty with option A is that the barracks and the and the, and the barracks are separated, separated from the the equipment, right? And then there's this problem with the the access out to the, out to Skyline. So could you talk in more detail about, you know, what kind of challenges that poses?
Absolutely. Supervisor Horsley is well aware of, you know, the analogy, you know, the hold-your-breath. You know, can you hold it for 30 seconds, a minute? If you're in really great shape, maybe two minutes. Well, tissue death, you know, in a cardiac event, you know, occurs, you know, in that four to six-minute mark. And as stated below, you know, I believe we're just over 300 feet, you know, currently, the hike up from the station. So it takes several minutes. The problem with that is that the delayed response, you know, obviously can have a negative impact on, you know, the result of that call, you know, or the emergency. So it is imperative that we have a station, you know, that has the living quarters, you know, or the barracks, as they're referred to, and the apparatus bay, you know, truly probably in the same facility. You'll notice that most every or every new firehouse construction has, you know, that type of arrangement, whether it's one-story and they walk directly out of the, out of the barracks into the App Bay or if it's above and there's a pole, you know, whatever's going to fit that current location. But it is definitely very important that both facilities be, you know, together just for the response.
Supervisor Tissier.
I had a quick question. Is CAL FIRE contributing any dollars to the station or the apparatus building or any of these buildings?
As I understand, CAL FIRE rents, pays rent to the county to put their Schedule B or state-funded wildland fire engine in these houses. The houses, you know, are actually, obviously, San Mateo County firehouses, which are designed to house the San Mateo County fire equipment. And then CAL FIRE pays, you know, a rental or a lease agreement. And I'm sure Mr. Malpe would probably be more familiar with that. But to my knowledge, they're not building or contributing to the building of it. They will just be paying rent, which I would assume will probably be elevated because they pay off of a square footage.
Especially if we're looking at almost doubling the cost of what was initially thought here. And when I read both reports, it looks like we're actually doubling if we were to do what would be ideal. So I guess that was my question. At some point, you know, we hit a certain threshold, is there some reimbursement through leasing or rental from the state?
Through the President Supervisor Tissier, two comments really related to this particular station project. One is that originally, the state had discussed with the county the prospect of essentially paying half the cost, that we would share the cost of the project. For a variety of reasons, this project didn't move ahead. State budget timing was not good. So what we will attempt to negotiate with the state is an agreement whereby that they essentially pay half the cost in in terms of rental costs. With respect to the plan for equipment replacement, that's still being discussed with the chief. And the actual timing for replacement equipment at this station can be adjusted. It hasn't been set. So your decision ought not to be based on on what might or might not be the timing of replacement equipment at this station.
Any other questions for Mr. Sheen?
Maybe one more for Adrian. The apparatus that's there on the state side is one wildland state piece of equipment. And then on the county side, you have a county engine, a reserve typically engine-like, a water tender, and then obviously all the, you know, support equipment that goes with that. So it is still primarily a county piece, you know, county fire station.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just got a question from Mr. Malpe. The the original estimates, I mean, isn't it fair to say those were just really, really very preliminary? I mean, obviously, this site is a very challenging site. So I I'm not sure where we got the 4.2 to begin with.
I think it was simply based on replacement cost on-site of the original station. And as Mr. Porter's indicated, in fact, you'll find in both sites, both sites have significant, unique challenges that have increased the cost. I will say, in Mr. Porter's original comments, in looking at these sites as as costs, as we break them down into the barracks, the office, et cetera, et cetera, I'm still not satisfied with the cost for the barracks portion. I mean, essentially, it's a house. And we're looking at a factor three or four times what it would cost to build a regular house. And and certainly, CDF rural fire stations are much less elaborate than that. So we're still refining those costs. And when we bring a final project to you, we'll make sure that the the type of project reflects the nature of the facility.
Okay. Well, unless there's other questions about Skylonda, let's, we'll move to Pescadero.
Thank you. So Pescadero Fire Station, as I mentioned, Pescadero's, of course, on the south coast. It has some challenges. And at this point, the biggest challenge is flooding. The Pescadero Fire Station is near Butino Creek, which has been a a challenge in that community in terms of regular flooding when we actually have rain during the winter. This year was pretty dry, but on a typical winter, you will see the firehouse essentially in an island area. This map is the 100-year floodplain map for the Pescadero area. And as you can see, the firehouse is designated by a red arrow. It's right on the edge of the floodplain. And what's interesting to note is most of the town of Pescadero is also in that floodplain. So building in a floodplain itself is a challenge. We would need to do, if we were to build on that site, whatever facilities we put in would need to be raised above that flood elevation. The firefighters, though, have been have been very ingenious in in what they've done, though. You can see that they've developed kind of a dike around their station. But on very heavy flood years, water does creep in under that building. And they're, they're having trouble with water under the floors. And when that happens, you do have mold problems. So although their efforts have been have been very good, it is very difficult to keep large volumes of water out of that building. In terms of the calls, the firehouse responds to two real types of calls. One is the highway calls on Highway One. And the other is more structure-type calls that are in the town. They're on the road. In fact, they're pretty well-located between Highway One and the town. So their current location is fairly ideal for that. But what ends up happening is that when it floods, CAL FIRE is forced to staff folks in their current station. And they also staff people on the town side of the of Butino Creek. Because obviously, when that creek's flooded, they can't get a fire truck over. So what they do is they they apparently stay in a barn near the high school until the flooding recedes so that if there's a call on the town side, they can easily access that. And then if there is a highway problem, they can go from their current fire station to the highway. Now, in looking at the the types of calls they get, the distribution is right about 50/50. So about half the calls are highway run, one-vehicle-related, and about half the calls are are on the town side. So then that brings up the possibilities of relocating the station.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't want to interrupt your answer. You're saying when it's, when there's flooding conditions, the fire personnel actually has to split up and move equipment? So they're, they got people and they can handle the town side and the coastal side?
Right, that's exactly what CAL FIRE does. And in fact, regardless of what option we pursue, until the flooding at Butino Creek is resolved, CAL FIRE will still be forced to have crews on either side of Butino Creek to be able to respond quickly. And and time is of the essence in these types of responses. So that that problem won't go away.
Just commented that when the road floods, it could be that you could end up losing a fire engine in that road. So for for example, when I was, again, when I was sheriff, I lost patrol cars. They think they could get through, they could not.
Oh, yeah.
Can I just ask a question on this picture? And I think you pretty much answered just in your last comments, Jim. Regardless of whether you put a station on higher ground, you still have that road that you'd have to get out the Highway One, still going to be flooded. So you're, regardless of building something new, you're still not, it hasn't changed access, per se. You still have to have someone on the side by the high school and then someone near the coast side in order to make it work. So you're.
Yes, that is correct. And and as we get further into the presentation, we'll talk about, you know, what the.
I guess the difference is if you, the existing fire station can get flooded, too. So that's why you'd want something on higher ground. But it doesn't change the access unless you have a road you can build around some area.
That's, that's correct. And and really, in terms of building another road, we've looked several ways to to address that flooding. And I know RCD is doing studies to find out the extent of the flooding and some options to to fix that based upon our experience with flood control districts and the requirements that the Region Water Quality Control Board are throwing out at this point. We think any solution to the flooding is going to be many years down the road. So we really have to plan for almost a two-side option or to have the ability for the firefighters to be in two places during the winter time. So I will move on. So we looked at three options again for the Pescadero Fire Station. The first option was to raise the buildings in their existing location. The second option was to replace, and and that is the barracks building, I'm sorry. The second option was to replace the barracks building at a different location on that site, near the apparatus building and up on a hill a little bit or near a hill. And then the final option was to construct a new station on another site outside of the flood areas. And I. And I did fail to mention, uh, the current station is also in a tsunami flooding area as well. So it not only gets riverine flooding, but it's subject to, uh, tsunami hazards.
About hurricanes, that too?
Uh, I, I would think hurricanes would probably rise to the occasion. So, uh, option A, what we are looking at is in option A is to actually physically raise that building up so that the living quarters and the offices are on a second level. And that way, when it floods, uh, you'll still have problems on the bottom floors, but all the structures and the people are above that. This is a common construction type in Florida and the East Coast when you're near the water. Those, those lower stories are typically for parking, but the water flows through them. Um, so that would be option A. Option B would be to relocate that barracks building, uh, to a site that's kind of near the hill and right next to the apparatus building. This gives you a little bit of an elevation boost. Uh, it's a new building, but you're still within the floodplain and the tsunami inundation area. So that still presents the challenge of water at that location. And then finally, option C, we looked at what it would take to, uh, to move the structure and what's available out on the South Coast. And in talking with, um, with the community, and we did go to, uh, a PMAC meeting, um, several suggestions came up. We had pursued a couple before that, but we found three options available. One was the post site, which is shown on the left-hand side of the screen. In discussions with Post, um, they're not amenable at this time to entertaining a sale of that site to the county. So the post site, uh, unfortunately was not an option. There's another site that is called the Beehive Site, uh, which is on Cloverdale Road, which is a potential location for this firehouse. And then finally, uh, we also looked at the high school site and that came about through a variety of ways, but, uh, the PMAC, um, committee did suggest this site and strongly recommended it. And in our discussions with the school district, actually I can't take credit for that. Real Property, uh, met with the school district and the school district is amenable to working with the county on a lease or purchase option for that site. Um, at the staff level, of course, the, the school board would have to approve such a property transfer or lease. But that is definitely an option, uh, for this project. These are some potential artist renditionings for those two sites. The upper site is the high school site. Uh, and the lower site is the Beehive Site. The Beehive Site presents certain challenges. Uh, the property itself is sloped. And for us to build on the Beehive Site, there would have to be a substantial amount of excavation to build that building into the hill. And with that excavation, obviously comes cost. The, um, high school site is a flat site and would essentially be the, uh, the most efficient site to build on. And in terms of access, it's wide open. Uh, discussions with Cal Fire indicate that the proximity of both sites is, is acceptable to them in terms of the town. So as we move on, we'll talk a little bit about what this might mean. So option A is to, to raise the barracks. Um, this would essentially bring that barracks up. There are challenges with that though. Uh, we're still building in a flood and a tsunami inundation area. Building and planning, uh, in our discussions with them have not recommended building in this area due to the challenges of permitting in this area. Um, this is within the coastal zone, so this would be subject to a coastal development permit. Option B is to replace the barracks nearer to the apparatus building. If we choose to stay on this site, this gets the building a little bit further away from the main flooding area. It's still within the flood zone in the tsunami inundation area, but it does provide new structures, um, that, that, um, essentially will be built to a higher elevation. Again, this has the same challenges as replacing the barracks in place. And then finally, uh, building a new fire station at a new site. Um, this option is certainly available. Uh, the PMAC, uh, at that meeting seemed to, uh, like this option the best. This is the most expensive option, and that is because if we build on a new site, we have to develop that site as well. So it's not just the structural cost. We have to come in and do all the site work. We have to put in, uh, water well and septic systems out there. So, um, that will involve more construction and more cost. So those are the three sites available. As I mentioned earlier, oops, I got ahead of myself. Let's go back. As I mentioned earlier, there's still this issue of flooding at Butino Creek. So if your board was direct to direct staff to pursue these, uh, purchase a new site option, essentially option C, what we would do is we would, um, acquire or lease property, depending upon what site becomes the most cost effective. But also we would not abandon the current fire station site. We would still keep that property and use the apparatus building or somehow, uh, bring in a trailer, but make that available to our firefighters when the winter floods come so that they're on, they have access to Highway one. Right now they're in a, a trailer, I believe in a barn. Uh, we would be on county property and we can work with, uh, Cal Fire to come up with an accommodation that's temporary, yet acceptable to the firefighters when the flooding occurs in the winter. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions on Pescadero or Skyland.
I think Supervisor Grum had a question to start.
I wanted to ask on the, um, on the old building.
Yes.
Why you wouldn't raise it and build a new building, but yet raise an old building that you said has dry rot and stuff like that?
Well, uh, it's, it's actually a less expensive option. We could actually pick that thing up and move it. And where there is dry rot, replace those boards. But it can be taken off the foundation, brought up. We would build a new structure below it with a new foundation and, uh, just raise it up. There are ADA issues that come up with that. That gets a little bit tricky getting a ramp up there.
Well, I was just gonna, but I was gonna, I mean, I don't know that A is the best option, but if we were to choose it, it seems to me that we'd be better off just building a brand new building that might be more useful for the, for the way, uh, the firefighters live these days instead of the way they lived a number of years ago.
That's certainly an option.
On, uh, option C, which frankly I favor, that, um, if it's at the high school, that's really, that's out of the flood zone?
Yes, it is.
Because that's essentially where, that's also the same area where we designate as our, uh, emergency shelter, direct for the whole community?
I, I'm not familiar with that as an emergency. So I, I will, I will agree with you.
Okay. So, hey, case, that's my preference is C. I know it's a lot more expensive, but.
What are the, I'm sorry.
Can you, uh, can you also talk about the, um, I mean, the, the, how fast does it get to Highway one? Cause that's where most of the crashes occur from that location?
That might be a good question for Cal Fire.
Okay.
Justin, would you like to?
It, to answer your question Supervisor Horsey, it definitely extends the time to Highway one. Uh, weather plays, you know, obviously a significant role. Also time of day, uh, you know, if high school's getting out or school is getting out, coming in, uh, you know, town, town traffic, so on and so forth. But, uh, it does add, you know, about four minutes or so, uh, you know, on any given day. So, uh, depending on the location, whether high school or Beehive, you know, four to five minutes out to the highway.
Did you say, excuse me, did you say, Justin, it adds four or five minutes or it's four or five minutes in total?
Correct. It would add, uh, because you're putting it out. If you were to be at the high school location, it, it does add, you know, time to get back out to the highway. I'd have to defer as far as mileage goes, uh, exactly, but I, I believe it's about two miles.
Sounds about right.
Okay. So it, you know, uh, that's about the timeframe.
Supervisor Tessier.
A couple of quick things. I guess one of the things, the post site obviously is closer and seemed to me to be probably actually a better site. It's, it's sort of unfortunate. It'd be nice to have some more discussions with them, you know, because they've got a lot of open space areas. And I don't know, is this open space, um, area right there?
Could you go back?
Anything unique?
I'm not aware, I'm sorry, uh, through the president. I'm not aware of anything unique. I know that Post's mission essentially is to acquire land and, and then preserve it for open space. And this is counter to their mission. And we, we had talked to them several months ago about this site. Prior to this, um, uh, issue coming before your board, we spoke with them again, or I should say Real Property spoke with them again. And their position hadn't changed. So, um.
I mean, I look at that area. I mean, there's so much open space out there. It seems a shame that they can't understand the safety provisions needed out there and let us utilize the site and maybe trade it for some other open space that the county owns out there or whatever. Um, and I guess the second thing is i- if you were to work with the school districts, I mean, you're talking about maybe another agency. First off, are they, is there going to be any growth in that area where they're going to need that property for one? And two, if there isn't, if you're working with another agency, could we work something with the school district if that's where it ends, which I think is too far away? Um, where it's at least for a dollar a year or something like that, because you're dealing agency to agency. Um, but I, I, I have to say, I think if we were to, if you're really going to rebuild, I would really try to look at something closer uh, to, and maybe just an exchange of land perhaps versus exchange of money. If we have a place for Post in that area that the county owns some land, I just, I don't know, it just seems a little bit, um, strange that they wouldn't even consider something when you're really talking about the safety of a community over there. I mean, that seems appalling to me.
You know, one, one of the things that Supervisor Grum suggests, I have not spoken with Post and, uh, I may have some small amount of influence with them, uh, but I, I would, uh, I, I did not realize that the high school site would add about four minutes to get it out to Highway one. But, uh, uh, I'd be, I think I would, uh, I would like to pursue, uh, Post to see if we could, uh, either purchase or make some kind of exchange. This is not PAD land, by the way, is it?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Just a point of clarification on the post site. So how, how is that impacted by flooding?
The post site is, I believe, out of the floodplain, but let's go back and check. There we go. Yeah, it's, it's off to the, to the right of that photograph. We, we would have to double check that. Um.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, I think it's worthy of inquiry for the reasons that it's closer, but we ought to make sure we understand the flooding too.
Yes, definitely.
We have a couple of speakers. Um, I think it's Karen, Karen Shade, uh, with us, if you'd like to say if you were, uh. Thank you for your patience waiting for this item.
You're welcome. And thank you for letting me speak. Um, we, at Pescadero, firstly, I'm representing PMAC and representing myself. We never voted on a particular site. Things change as, as, you know, Don just said he didn't realize how far away it was. And, uh, Ms. Tessier, um, said this didn't, doesn't make sense to add to the firefighter's job. In looking at all of these sites, there is one site that hasn't been, um, that hasn't been mentioned here. And that's the site of county owned land where the, um, Public Works has been moving some equipment up there. They've done some road widening and it is up on the hill. It's out of the scenic corridor. And again, we don't have to pay for it because we already own it. And I think that using, utilizing the site that it's on is, um, counterproductive because, um, even when it doesn't flood, it's still boggy. And these poor firemen are in land that's moldy and it's just not, it's not healthy for them to have to be there. So I think that we should consider the one that's up on the hill that's out of the way. And hopefully, um, San Gregorio Creek isn't going to continue flooding. Hopefully that with the, the folks that we're working on, working with now, we'll find a resolution that we can solve it. We've been working on the flooding for forty years. So, um, I don't think, I think that it's counterproductive there too, to say, okay, it's always going to flood here. Might not. Um, some of the, some of the, um, the pluses with using the land that's up on the hill, it's, um, it's behind the firehouse, up above the firehouse, is that they have enough land. Stop.
Do you take a, just can you just wrap up?
Okay. They have enough, they have, um, the space. It's high and dry. The location is neutral. Fifty percent of the um, occurrences are on, on east and fifty percent are west. Um, we don't have to buy the land. There's electrical power up there. There's water up there and there's even, um, groundwater up there to wash the trucks. So they're not using um, water that could be used for town and CSA eleven. Um, it's not on a busy road. It's safer for helicopter landings when they have to, um, evacuate people in an emergency. It's closer to the telecommunitization towers. Um, and, um, it, uh, sorry. So anyway, I think that we should look at that piece.
And maybe, could someone point out on the map where that is on?
It's called the War Height Property. Yeah.
We're on, can you show us here?
I don't know if I can show it.
I think I could show it.
Or maybe you missed it.
Where the current site, we just.
Yeah.
Up to about here. This is where the, where it starts and we, the county, we of course being in the county, um, all that piece up there. So I think that that should be one of them.
And maybe a supporter, you have some perspective on that?
Rocks and snakes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
So the, uh, through the president, the site that's being referred to is up off of Bean Hollow Road, up a steep road near our well for CSA eleven and near our water tank. Um, as you go up that road, uh, there's a site that used to be an old airfield that we use as a lay down area for our road construction purposes. And we looked at that site, but we also looked at the, um, environment that it's in. And there's plenty of critters up there that we have to deal with. But the, the larger issue is the steepness of the road, the fact that it's a one lane road, that we're going up and down with, with heavy equipment on a regular basis up there. And it didn't appear to be a viable option, both from our operations as well as the safety of the firefighters coming in and out.
Okay, thank you. Justin, Mr. Sheaf, do you have any comments on this, uh, Pescadero situation?
Uh, it would probably be on the entire program if that's okay, both fifty-eight and fifty-nine.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, for, uh, Skyland, first, you know, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Porter, obviously, and staff, uh, Mr. Mulpey. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's been put into this. Uh, and it's really been a pleasure actually working, um, working with them recently, uh, you know, at the PMAC meetings and such. Uh, obviously this stuff is not easy to do. Uh, and I, I have to commend them. They've, they've done a good job. Um, starting with Skyland, uh, and the phased approaches, uh, you know, from, you know, a labor standpoint and management standpoint, it would be very nice to see it be one project. Um, so they're not in construction for several years. We know, you know, building a station can take a while. And I don't want to put specific times, but probably a year. And, you know, if you're coming back to then do road projects and, uh, apparatus projects and, uh, bay project, uh, apparatus bay projects, it can just take a lot of time. Um, I know that we'd like to see it done hopefully in, as one project, uh, so we can continue with our plan of replacing the apparatus. That apparatus up there happens to be, uh, you know, fairly old and having, you know, issues. So it is a priority to get replaced. Um, the, uh, Station fifty-nine on the coast, um, you know, whatever the location ends up being, I think that we're okay with it. Obviously, uh, it was stated, you know, previously that, I believe Bean Hollow Road, about fifty percent of the calls are on the town side and fifty percent of the calls are on the highway side. So finding that happy median of a location, um, you know, letting obviously the experts, uh, you know, at Real Property and the county staff figure out what that's going to be. Uh, you know, I know Chief Jalbert, you know, is obviously willing to, you know, work with them and, uh, at the end of the day, make it happen either way. Um, the, uh, the, the biggest thing here is that, you know, obviously we keep it going. The one thing that I was going to ask is, you know, that we have obviously a formal committee, you know, where, where the fire department or firefighters, you know, that are going to be living there, be involved in the process. And, and they really have been. Um, you know, but it would be nice, you know, obviously to be at the meetings and such along the way. Um, and again, you know, just asking for your support and obviously thanking you for what you've done so far. Uh, but whatever additional funds it's going to take to, to get this done and get it done right the first time. Uh, you know, obviously trying not to build in a, in a floodplain and trying to build the fire station up on the hill, you know, with the sewage issues and such, it would be great to do it all right the first time. So again, I appreciate all the support.
Thank you for your, for your comments, your input. I, I did have one question for Mr. Mr. Porter. I was also, you know, I've, um, reading the memos prior to this meeting, you know, it just seemed like, you know, how in the world could you ever build at the existing site given it's in a flood? And, um, but you know, this whole point about the, the other sites being so far away, you know, hadn't, something I hadn't thought about too much. And I, but then I was really kind of struck by this suggestion that if we do build away from the flood zone, that we'll still keep some kind of, some kind of a barracks there. Some kind of barracks there or mobile barracks or suggesting that we, we would continue to use this site. Which is kind of inconsistent with my fears of it being a flood zone. I'm just trying to reconcile, reconcile that. I mean, in other words, I guess if it's, if we're so concerned about it being a flood site, I'm surprised we'd put anything there.
To, to answer your question, it, it would be temporary space when the flooding occurs, so it wouldn't be their permanent location. But regardless of where we cite this, this facility, if we cite it on the current site. Somebody's going to have to be over by that barn by the high school to address the town calls. And if we cite over there, we've got to have somebody over here to address the highway calls, so.
On that, in that instance though, if there's a big flood, then presumably this site wouldn't work for that temporary purpose, I wouldn't, wouldn't think.
Well, it's, I, I would defer to the Cal Fire, but they're, they're making it work now. So when Butino Creek floods, the bulk of the flooding occurs towards the town, like between Bean Hollow Road and the town. The, the access out on Pescadero Creek Road does have the potential to get water on it, but not to the extent that you see on the town side. So they can still get out that way.
It floods, but it's not the first thing to flood.
Right, correct. That's correct.
Any other questions?
I guess I have a couple. How often do they have to use dual sites? I mean, if we're going to rebuild somewhere else, how many, how many times a year do you end up having to still? Do you have to add additional staff to, to staff those two separate locations?
Yes, so twofold answer. Yes, we do have to add additional staff. When you say how often, it really just depends on the weather that year. You know, we got really lucky this year in a roundabout way without the weather and obviously we need the rain.
We'll take one of our wetter seasons, like was it two years ago or three years ago? How many times did you have to have separate people stationed separately?
To, to give you an exact number, I'd, I'd really have to go back and look at statistics, but probably on average, you know, four or five times. The big thing that happens here, and again, maybe a multi-phased approach here. But typically, we can tell when there's going to be flooding, you know, it doesn't just happen in a half an hour. You know, we know the storm's coming, we prepare for it. As the storm starts to ramp up, you know, and accumulations happen and the creeks start to flood, we know that we need to move apparatus. One of the points that was made is that potentially, you know, having a trailer or something at the county corp yard down the road from the firehouse. Maybe leaving the existing apparatus room to store, you know, a piece of apparatus that they could get prior to the flood. But really pulling out of that current facility when it's flooding is, is not good. You know, the, where the engine approaches and gets up onto the road can sometimes be three to four feet deep. Which Dawn is right, damages the apparatus. We have stranded apparatus and, and we've definitely done a lot of water damage to them. So really getting that apparatus out of that location and staging them. And I believe somebody had asked about the barn situation of living, how they do it right now. To answer the question, the guys sleep on cots in the barn on the town side. And then out on the highway side, they just stay in the engine, you know, and basically post up.
Mr. President, Lloyd Justice here, I have a, a question. In those flooding instances, how much assistance can you count on from your Half Moon Bay Station to that area?
Good question. Quite a bit. We work together, as you know, the, we have the boundary drops within the county, so everybody supports each other. We're lucky enough that Coastside Fire is also a Cal Fire contract like San Mateo County Fire. The problem is, is that Coastside Fire and Half Moon Bay, they have their own calls to deal with. So it's about a 20-minute, you know, drive down for them, moving, you know, quickly in a storm. You know, much longer, a half hour, 40 minutes to get down there. And we do rely on them, you know, for the, for the major calls. It's, it's tough to rely on them on a permanent basis because they can't keep an apparatus down there for a staged period of time. They'll respond down for the emergency, but then they need to, you know, backfill to their, back to their home location. But we do work together well.
I just had another question for Jim. Obviously, no matter what we do, the flooding isn't going to be gone tomorrow. What's the timeline for coming up with a, a solution to the flooding issue? I mean, I heard from this woman, we've got 30 or 40 years they've been dealing with it. I mean, at some point, you know, we're going to be building things, we still have to separate. We're not improving anything in a way other than I will say the barracks and have better quality of life for our firefighters. I appreciate that. But at some point, that flooding issue seems to be the key issue here.
Through the President, the RCD is working on options, studying the floodplain itself, looking at options that are available to address the flooding. That is a very preliminary step in, in a flood control project. I think part of the trick on this, and unfortunately, this is a multi-agency issue. That is going to take a long time to resolve, and it's not just agencies, it's private property owners. Butino Creek, which is the source of the flooding, has been silting up over time. So there's been erosion in the hills above Pescadero that caused the sediment to get in that creek. In the past, individual property owners had gone in with heavy equipment and cleared it out. That was before regulations changed. Now you're no longer permitted to do that. There's red-legged frogs and San Francisco garter snakes out there. So although the solution hasn't been determined, what it might include is what's called upstream detention. Which is building some sort of check dam or other facility upstream to catch the water before it gets to Pescadero and then meter it out. Or try to do some channel work. The trick with the channel work is that aside from downstream, or it would be north of Pescadero Road. That is State Parks facility. Butino Creek, south of Pescadero Creek Road is private property. So any solution is going to involve cooperation between State Parks, because they'll be getting the water. And private property owners, because any work within that channel would occur there. And if there's upstream check dams, there needs to be property to put that dam. So it's a very complex project at this point, and I would say it's several years out and, and could be very expensive. So I don't really have a timeline, but just based on our experience in Colma Creek and San Francisco Creek. This could be five, 10, 15 years out.
Can I just also comment that it may well be that the current location might end up as part of the channel? Because it's one of the things that we are studying. There's about five or six different potential options besides the check dam. So it probably is not a great location for the future, anyway.
Just one final comment on that. We have looked at raising that road. So, you know, one of the options is get the road out of the floodplain. It simply won't work because on the north side of Pescadero Creek Road, there are private properties there. And if we brought the road up high enough to get out of the floodplain, it does really two things. Raising the road elevation creates essentially a dam, so it would cause further flooding upstream. But secondly, trying to access those properties would be a real problem. Because the transition from a higher road down to those parcels would essentially eat up all their front yards. So it, it, it was something that we looked at, but didn't appear to be feasible.
Thank you, Supervisor Grim.
Thank you. That's kind of where I was going, between the flooding, between the life of, of a building, the life of equipment. I mean, we haven't really added to, talked about, we've, we've been going all around it. What is the life of each option? I mean, I'd just, I'd rather spend more money and have something that would last for 10, 15, 20 years. Than, than do something at less money and be back here in five, 10 years, talking about this all over again. So I wonder if, you know, we're not, if we could have kind of, we're not making a decision today, are we? Yeah, I mean, I'd like to come back with sort of a, a matrix of life. Proposed or a. A life cycle, yeah, thanks. Something that says, we have about six options in front of us. So something that says what that life, what that option of that would be. And then we, I think we could make a better decision based on how much money we want to spend.
And I could. Make some contacts with Post to see if we could secure that property. I think that's a great suggestion.
If it's out of the floodplain.
And we'll, and we'll check it, check its status.
Giving a word. But any other, going back to Skylander, if you're looking for some direction, I, I would like to see us do Phase 1 and 2. And I guess it's B, new buildings that the current apparatus or near the current apparatus building in a phased reorganization. And I'd like to do part 2, which is the demolition and new. Septic, a new septic line system and, and improve actually the circulation. And the, I, number 3, the Phase 3, that could occur at some later point. Obviously, we've got time. But that, that would be my recommendation for Skylander. And for. Pescadero is a very, very difficult, very challenging area. So I'd like to go back and see if I could make some headway with Post on the sale of that land. I did not, I thought that this, the high school was actually a great site, but until Justin Sheaf indicated it would add four minutes to getting to these crashes on the highway. I think that's a little, I, I would prefer a, a better site that's closer to the highway, especially if, you know, having seen. These usually are head-ons and these are significant, serious crashes that you need to have medical attention as soon as possible.
I, I had one last question too. What is the percent, is the percentage of medical to fire calls 80/20 or like it is on the bayside?
You know, that's a good question for Cal Fire. I really don't have that information. I know the geographic split, but not the type of split.
To answer your question, it's very close, yes. You know, typically medical, you know, followed by rescues, vehicle accidents.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, Justin, I didn't understand your comments about Skylander. Could you? The very beginning part?
Yeah, what I was requesting was the, that they build the apparatus bay with the station incorporated altogether. So that the firemen, you know, would either walk out of the app, walk out of the barracks into the apparatus bay directly. Without having to walk through, you know, the open weather. You know, or, you know, slide down a pole or walk down the stairs, whatever it is, but have direct access to their equipment. Just for faster response time to the community and less, you know, construction time that they would have to endure over a period of years. Just, just my request.
And that's the case in Option B, right? Because we're moving, we're moving everything in front of the existing apparatus bay, right? I mean, that, that, that meets, that meets the need of moving it closer in Option B, if I understand correctly.
It would be closer, but it would not be joined. And what we were asking for is that, you know, it'd be one building. If, if you take a moment and, you know, stop by pretty much any firehouse, you'll notice that the living quarters and apparatus bay are all one building. And it's important, you know, for the amount of medical calls that, that they run, that they do have access to the equipment right now. So.
The, the trade-off, Mr. President, members of the board, is you're going with Option B, you're increasing the cost by 50%. With doing one building, you're increasing the cost, you're tripling it or maybe more.
Yeah, just, just to finish up on that, one of the reasons why the phased approach was, was preferred or a good option. Was that we're able to keep the firefighters and the office and barracks functioning while we build this new building. If we were to try to build something attached or essentially demo everything, we've got to come in with temporary trailers to house the firefighters for the whole construction period. That's going to add cost. So what we tried to do was make this as cost effective as possible. Not to say we couldn't do that, but you will see cost figures escalate. And I just wanted to make one more comment in terms of the life cycle of these buildings. So we build the buildings to the current building code, and this is an essential services facility. So it's, it's a little bit stronger per se than, than your normal residential building code. It's not as if we build for a 50-year life. We build for the building code. And really, the life of the structure is a lot, it's very much tied to maintenance. I mean, how you maintain that structure. What I think Supervisor Horsley pointed out was, was an interesting point, which is if we build on the current site without. We really don't know what the outcome of the Butino Creek flooding issue is going to be. We could try, if we choose that site, we could move that as far away from the creek as possible. But I think that would be the only thing that would affect life cycle costs truly. We can still report back on that, but I'm pretty sure that's what our experts will tell you. Sure.
I, I just want to make a comment. I sort of agree with Dawn in doing the first two phases. I mean, I think we're further along on that one for consideration. But I would like to have us take a, a really hard look at these costs. Because I have to agree, when you're talking barracks and offices, that seems like a huge, how many, how many beds are we talking about? How many room? I mean, I'm just, it seems like a very expensive situation there and I, I'd like to take a harder look. I mean, and at least let the board know if we can pare those costs down a little bit.
And you're talking housing for 10 to 12, so depending on how you configure the bedrooms.
Are 10 to 12 onsite at any one time?
Yes, sir. There's eight typically staffed on a day. But with staffing patterns or when we have to staff up for storms and such. Or high fire dangers, we'll bring additional on. So the Cal Fire side will usually bring one to two additional on, and the county side will bring one to two additional on for those high staffing. Which we anticipate obviously this summer.
Just a, just to follow up on that, in terms of process, we've done very conservative estimating to try to make sure that the costs don't go up. As we get deeper into this project, once we figure out the programming and what the bedrooms look like and what the size of the facility looks like. We'll be refining those estimates, so we'll have better numbers. And if, if it's the desire of the board, if we have some indication of what options you may be thinking about. Our next step would be to engage a cost estimator, work with the firefighter staff, find out what that program looks like. And try to come back with you with more refined estimates.
I had a couple, a couple of comments too. I mean, both of these projects are now a long, long, long over too. So I think, I think, you know, we definitely want to do them, do them right. I think, you know, back, back on Pescadero, there's a lot of factual things we need to have brought back. But as to Skylander, you know, to me, A and B, you know, cost-wise are, are very similar. Because again, A should have a bullet point about, you know, eventually we're going to have to replace the apparatus shed, I believe. Because I don't think the equipment, at some point in time, I don't know when that is, we will have new equipment, we'll have to place, we have to have a place to put it. So I don't, I, I, I think the comparisons are, would be, would be a little more appropriate with the apparatus in both places. I mean, the point, of course, about making sure we understand these costs is, is, is well taken. I think that. As Supervisor Horsley suggested, you know, we, we ought to, you know, I do agree, we should proceed with, you know, 1 and 2. They're, they're, they're essentially. They, they really are joined together. I mean, once you finish the new, new facilities, you, you need to take down the old ones and get the septic in place. Now, as to 3, I guess my request would be to have some understanding of, you know, brought back to the board is, you know, when do we think we're going to need this new apparatus building? And we ought to just, you know, you know, if we, if we know when that is, we ought to plan, plan for that. And as I understand it, it will be, it may not, it won't be joined with the, with the barracks and the office, but it will be at the same general vicinity. So I guess my, my request back would be to get a better sense for when we will need that. And we should, we should just go ahead and plan for that. I mean, we are fortunate, particularly because of our jail bonding, that we have a lot of capital dollars and, and, you know. I, 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 I think that if we need a new apparatus building, we ought to figure out when we need it and what it's going to cost. And, and not just kind of push it off, push it off. Because it, so that's my, that's my only kind of caveat, my only addition to Supervisor Horsley is. Get a better sense of when we need this apparatus building and what it's going to cost.
Can I ask one, one other question? I understand, and I think we're all, it sounds like we all think Phase 1 and 2 should move forward. But I would like it to come back to us with that cost estimate before we actually take formal action. I mean, this would be direction. Is this just guy, you're just looking for guidance today?
Yeah, exactly.
Any other, any other input? Alright, thanks for the presentation. It was very informative. Alright, well now we're on the money-making side of the equation. Big time money-making. The real estate wizards. Will to report to us on a exciting opportunity with the Circle Star Buildings.
Good morning, Mr. President, Pine, members of the board, Lady Manager Monty, County Council, John Nimble. It's my pleasure this morning to open up the presentation to your board regarding the first step in your consideration of the sale of the Circle Star Plaza property. Developing the process for the sale had a unique challenge. And that challenge required mimicking or modeling our sale process as much as possible on the private sector commercial real estate sale process. While also meeting. commercial real estate sale process, while also meeting all the requirements of the government codes regarding county sale of property. We had a wonderful team who did develop a process that we're going to be presenting to you today, which I think accomplished those, those two goals. That team included staff from CBRE, the Commercial Real Estate Broker, both out of their San Francisco, Foster City, and San Jose offices, included our staff from Real Property, led by Frida, Frida Manuel, our Real Property Manager, and Matthew Chidester, and also excellent support from County Council. Lee Thompson was our council during his tenure with the county until he left, and John Nimbleton has capably taken over his spot. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Frida and John.
Good morning. President Pine, Supervisor Horsley, Supervisor Groom, Supervisor Tessier, Supervisor Slocum, Mr. Mountby, and Council John Nimbleton. It's a pleasure to be here and recommend to you the sale of Circle Star Plaza. The way that we would like to structure our agenda today is I'd like to give you a brief overview of the property, provide you with a recommended minimum bid price pursuant to the auction process, provide you with some projections, some financial projections, that if the recommended bid price was achieved, what it would mean to the county, give you our property evaluation of why we believe the recommended bid price is supported, and also provide you with an analysis of why it's beneficial for the county to sell the property today versus holding it until the remainder of its lease term. And then, of course, we'll have Chief Deputy Counsel John Nimbleton join me in providing you with the sale process overview. So as we all know, Circle Star Plaza is located in San Carlos, with a portion of it in Redwood City. It compr- it is comprised of two Class A office buildings. In its aggregate, it's over two hundred thousand square feet, sitting on approximately six-point-three acres. It was built in approximately two thousand, and it's currently a hundred percent leased to a single tenant, with a co-terminus term on both buildings through the year 2020. The rental income range over the life of the lease, it's approximately between six and seven million per year. Our recommended minimum bid price is eighty-five-point-five million dollars. Based upon this price, we believe that the county will yield a profit of approximately thirty-five million over its three-year hold period. That includes, that takes account, into account the forty-million-dollar purchase price, plus the additional ten million dollars in expenditures. And those expenditures are for property maintenance, operating expenses, tenant improvements, and the sales expenses associated with the marketing and the sale of the property. To determine the eighty-five-point-five million dollars, we went through several analyses. The first, we looked at the market. And I apologize if it's a little small there, I don't know if, if you can make it a little bigger or not, but we looked at sales volume on the peninsula, and if you can see it, between 2011, we looked, over the past three years, so between 2011 and first quarter of 2014, and you can see that the highest volume was in the year 2012. It went down significantly in the year 2013, simply because of the lack of supply in the market. A lot of buildings were sold during the year 2012, and so there wasn't much product out there in 2013. The interesting trend here is that in the first quarter of this year, we're catching up to the full year of 2012. So there's a significant amount of volume in the market. We then looked at the office fundamentals, and specifically, we looked at office vacancy and asking average rents. And we've broken it out in here in terms of first quarter, because we're currently in the first quarter of 2014, just to make it even, and we've, we've shown you the northern, central, and southern counties. So for northern, it would be from Daly City to Burlingame, from central, it would be from San Mateo to Redwood City, and southern would be Menlo Park and Palo Alto. So our particular property is in the central county, and you can see in the vacancy rate drops significantly from the first quarter of 2011, from about fourteen percent, down to ten percent in this quarter. And the estimate is that it's going to continue to drop. Correspondingly, the average asking rents over the same time period have increased tremendously, from two dollars and sixty cents a square foot to almost four dollars today. And that's on a per, uh, full-service basis. Our next step in our analysis was to look at what was currently going on the market. What were similar properties trading for in terms of their amount per square foot and their capitalization rates? And these, these two properties are just a sample of what we found. And the criteria that we were looking at was like-kind properties to Circle Star, meaning we wanted a Class A office space, and we were looking at single-tenant buildings. That's important to note, because at the end of the lease term, a single-tenant building poses a binary risk that a multi-tenant building does not. And we also looked at the remaining lease term on these single-tenant buildings. That's also important to note, because the longer the remaining lease term, the longer the contractual rent period that's associated with the building. If, if it's shorter, it poses more risk to investor, because they're not guaranteed that contractual rent. So you can see, I've just put up here two samples, 305 Walnut Street in Redwood City, and 100 Rowwood Shores. And they traded between, one traded at four hundred a square foot, and one at five-seventy-five. Now, the reason for the difference, if you can, if you can read down, is really the contractual rent, as well as the length of the lease term on each. The one that sold for five-seventy-five is at current mark, marking rents of three dollars a square foot. Our particular building is not. Right now, we're about seventeen percent below current market rents, which is a great upside potential for, for a particular investor. Also, on the one that sold at five-seventy-five per square foot, there's twelve years remaining, which gives it a steady income stream, a safety net for anybody that purchased the property. Ours, we're at a seven years with some options left on it. Then, our analysis one and two, why should the county sell today? Why shouldn't we hold the property until the remainder of the lease term, and possibly sell it at the end, or possibly try to re-lease it? And then, these next two graphs will illustrate that. So what we've done here is we're looking at the net present value of the property over the course of the remaining lease term. The first bar graph shows you if we sold it today for eighty-five-point-five million dollars versus if we held it for sale in each subsequent year. So if we held it for sale in year twenty-five, year, excuse me, 2015, you can see that the sale price would be approximately eighty-two-point-seven million dollars. Now, that is from taking the residual value of the property, which we've estimated based on increasing cap rates. And our cap rates start from six-point-eight percent today, and go up fifty basis points every year, based on perceived risk. And the perceived risk is that interest rates will increase, as well as our lease duration is diminishing every year that we hold the property. So as the cap rate goes up, the value of the property is going to go down. And you can see that the eighty-seven-point-seven will include both that residual value, as well as the ca- the income stream, so the six million dollars for the first year. And we discounted it back at eight percent. So the top part of the graph, the two-point-seven-six million, will show you how much the county would lose if we waited in year 2015. And correspondingly, you can follow that theory all the way through to year 2019, which would be about nine-point-five million dollars. If we took that same theory, and we just applied it to the amount per square foot, with the same capitalization rates, and the same discounted rate of eight percent, instead of the monetary value and its amount per square foot, you would be going from selling it at four, four-hundred-and-eleven dollars per square foot today, to three-sixty-one in year 2019.
I'm sorry, if I could have the next slide? Thank you. So, as Ms. Jensen was indicating earlier, the process that we use to sell this, uh, these buildings, if we, if we indeed do that, is governed by the, by the government code, as you can see, Section 25, 520, et cetera. There are four primary components that I just wanted to highlight for you today, and we'll drill down a little bit into each one of them, but one would be the adopts, adoption of a resolution of intent to sell the property, and we, you know, would propose to have that happen today. The next major milestone in the process would be the deadline for receipt of sealed bids and deposits of earnest money, which would happen on May fourteenth. That would be the deadline for submission of those things. Thereafter, on the twentieth of May, 2014, at their board meeting, there would be an opening of sealed bids, and a receipt of oral bids, if, in fact, there were oral bids presented at that time. At that same meeting, the board would consider acceptance of the highest bid, either sealed bid or appropriately-made oral bid. If I could have the next slide? So the resolution of intent, some primary aspects to it. It declares the board's intent, of course, to sell the property, provides a description of it, and specifies the minimum price that Ms. Manuel's already mentioned, the eighty-five-point-five million dollars that she highlighted in her presentation. It also sets forth material terms of the sale, and incorporates by reference a purchase-and-sales agreement, which, a copy of which is in the packet. It fixes the time for the public meeting for opening of sealed proposals, which I've already highlighted, and notably, it does require a four-fifths vote. Next slide, please. So again, I, I was noting that by May fourteenth, 2014, we would have written proposals in. These proposals would be made on a standard form that we've prepared. We would require a deposit of ten million dollars in earnest money to be available by May fourteenth, 2014. We understand from the, uh, the escrow holder that we'd be dealing with, that the money would actually have to be deposited by May thirteenth, in order for the funds to be available on the fourteenth. Next slide, please. So the way the actual sale procedure would work on the twentieth of May is that the sealed proposals would be brought to the meeting, and they would be opened at the meeting. We've got it structured such that the board president would be performing that function, or the county manager, if, if not the board president.
I want to do it.
Very good. So, um...
There's no percentage of board.
But, so, so it's set up for the opening to, to occur at the meeting. The highest conforming bid, the, the highest bid that conforms to the requirements that are made by a responsible bidder would be identified at that time, at, at which point the board president would call for oral bids from folks who've already made a, a written proposal and deposited earnest money. You'd need to do that in order to be eligible to make an oral bid at that time. What the government code requires is that any oral bid be at least five percent above the highest written bid from a responsible party. Thereafter, it's our proposal that we accept bids in increments of fifty thousand dollars. That's actually a discretionary point that the, in my, our legal analysis, but that's the way we've got things structured right now. Immediately thereafter, at the same meeting, we would propose that the board consider acceptance of the highest bid, whether it's a written bid or an oral bid that qualifies, and that the board adopt a resolution, in fact, accepting that bid, if that's... Alternatively, the board can decide not to sell the property, and withdraw the property from sale. Can't, however, reject the highest qualified bid, and, and go to a second or third level bid. I think that's what I have. Thank you.
Very good presentation. Questions?
No, I just want to comment, you know, at the time we purchased this property, you know, we thought we had a pretty good deal, but as we can see by selling it now, we actually had a good deal then, and even a better deal now. So, you know, I certainly think it's prudent, as you look at those graphs, as to, you know, the thing with land use is, timing is everything. And so I think, at the suggestion of our county manager, I think it was good to take a look and see, you know, where we'd fall with all this, and I, I do think, looking at this, I'd be willing to make a recommendation to adopt the resolution utilizing items A and B on our intent to sell.
Second. Okay. Yeah, I'd just make a, make a comment. I mean, I think, I'm very comfortable going forward with the sale. I mean, I don't think the county really wants to be in the, you know, real estate business, and, you know, this is an opportunity to realize a very substantial gain. Analysis shows that it's the right time to do that, and, you know, these, these funds can be put to good use on other, other, you know, capital projects in particular, that we are now thinking about, such as Cordillis, for example, perhaps. So I, I think it's a, a good move, move as well. So motion is second. Any further comments?
No.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimously approved. Mr. Mountby, your report. Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. President, and members of the board, in lieu of the hour, I'll simply answer any questions the board may have on my report.
I actually had one comment. Under Community Services, they were talking about the North Fair Oaks, the improvements to Middlefield Road, and they talked about having done a survey of businesses and property owners. I assume they've also included our clinic, and, and, you know, those that need to comment on that?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, okay. Because, as you know, we only have a temporary solution there. Okay. Okay.
I, I had a question just about the power outage. I mean, it was, it was concerning that some of our backup mechanisms didn't work as well as one would hope, and could you just talk a little bit more about how we can prevent that in the future?
We're still...
I think there were some people stuck in elevators, for example.
There, there were for, for several minutes. We're still analyzing that. What apparently happened is, because of the proximity of the transformer to our emergency generators, when the transformers blew, they also blew the circuits in the generators, so they didn't kick on automatically. They have to be started manually after a few minutes. And we're, we're certainly analyzing that, and to see what needs to be done to avoid that particular situation in the future.
And then, I'd make one other comment, too. As we've all read, and it's, it's very impressive that we have the highest credit rating from Moody's, that's quite an accomplishment. So kudos to the county manager, and Mr. Sacco, and everyone who does budgets, and...
Well, and to the board of supervisors, you set the policy. We, we are waiting for S and P. The, the process became, has become a little more laborious with S and P, as they looked into the unique arrangement that we had with our construction manager at risk in building the project. Our financials are fine. They're triple-A, just like they, they've checked out with Moody's, but they wanted some double assurance, or actually, with the rating agency, some quadruple assurance, that the project will be delivered on time and within budget. So they've actually hired a construction consultant to review our methodology for building the building, and that has delayed their ratings. We expect them next week.
Okay. Well, if there's other questions, we can move to board member reports. Would you like to start today, Mr. Slocum?
No report. Thank you.
All right.
I just have a couple of quick things. First off, you know, we were just talking about Middlefield Road, and, and I mentioned the clinic is having some comments. I just want to thank Chuck Harvey. He's with, well, sort of the administration of Caltrain, Samtrans, because he was very instrumental in getting us a temporary solution. I mean, they still have to, we still have to dot a few i's and cross some t's, but he was able to help us with the Caltrain staff, as well as U.P., in making sure that we can do something temporarily there, because it is a very difficult area there for pedestrians to get across. So one, I just want to publicly say thank you. Second is that on May fifth, we're having a report-back summit from the original Newtown summit we had last year, so we're going to be reporting out the, the progress there. Second thing, June seventh, Disaster Preparedness Day, once again at the Event Center, early morning, ten to eleven, free to get into the fair, and, to the disaster preparedness and the fair, as well as free parking. And my last announcement is an adjournment memory of Howard Poblitz. He passed away on April fourteenth at the age of eighty-two. He leaves behind his beloved wife, Virginia, his children Sandy, Richard, Rory, Randy, and Cindy, and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. He was a, attended Sacred Heart, and was enshrined in their Athletic Hall of Fame. He was a plumber for forty-two years, and a member of Local Thirty-Eight. And in his retirement, he spent a lot of time at Sharp Park Golf Course, and his two passions of life were golf and the Forty-Niners. So he will be sorely missed. He's a member of Our Lady of Mercy Parish.
Thank you, Supervisor Tissier. Supervisor, Supervisor Horsley?
I'd like to adjourn the memory of Dale Dunham. Dale was, he's of Happen Bay, died unexpectedly this March twenty-eighth. He's born in Michigan, and he spent thirty years in the United States Air Force. He retired as a lieutenant colonel, and he moved to California in nineteen eighty-eight, settled in Happen Bay in nineteen ninety... to California in 1988, settled at Happin Bay in 1998. He took a job as a director of emergency planning at SF International Airport, where I did work with him, um, on emergency planning issues. He retired from the airport 2004, um, spent several years, dedicated years caring for his, uh, wife, who eventually passed on. And then he, uh, he became involved in coast site issues. And for several years, he was the conscience of Happin Bay City Council, speaking eloquently and with humor during the public comment period at, it says nearly every meeting, uh, every meeting I was ever at, he was always there. In 2009, he married his second wife, Bonnie McClung, who was, uh, on the city council, was at one time the mayor. And they, she, they settled down to the, uh, Freshman's Creek on the coast site, followed a lot of his passions of building a koi pond. Um, in that case, uh, he survived by his wife Bonnie of Happin Bay and his, uh, couple of, couple of sons and stepdaughters as well. And there is a service for him that will be on, um, April 26th, which is, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Charles M. Stone. He died on April 15th, 2014. He was a lifelong singer, made his life, uh, in music. He did opera, he did, uh, congregational, he was the choir director at St. Roberts Church in, uh, San Bruno. He sang in 26 different languages. Um, and he is the father of Burlingame, uh, excuse me.
Belmont.
Belmont City Council, Charles P. Stone, and, uh, Charles' wife, Jessica.
Thank you. And I just would like to, um, just call public attention to our, uh, our Coast to Coast Prescription Discount Card, which we've, um, rolled out again. That is a, a program initiated by the board, uh, a number of years ago to help residents access affordable prescriptions. Uh, and it's particularly helpful for folks who, um, you know, do not have public health, uh, or not in public health programs to obtain discounts. And this Coast to Coast, um, uh, service has negotiated discounts on consumers' behalf, um, and it's accepted at pharmacies across the county. And it actually, actually produces a little revenue for the county as well, um, that goes to our health, uh, systems, health coverage unit. So I'd urge people to take advantage of that. So I believe that concludes our meeting. Thank you, uh, everyone.